Good evening, welcome to the May tenth, two thousand seventeen zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the Republic of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands as one nation under God and visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start off with a roll call.
Ms. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Blais?
Here.
Mr. Hebert?
Here.
Mr. Maroon?
Here.
Mr. Crockett?
Here.
Mr. Richard?
And Mr. Loizell.
Here.
A couple of notes here. Mr. Loizell is back, and as per custom, when a chairman comes back, they usually come back as a voting member. It doesn't seem to do with anything other than the fact that they have the experience and it's just allowed, so welcome back. It affects a couple of people, but not by anything that they did or issues with them. It's just strictly policy that has happened. It's standard operating procedure, and I just want to make sure people know that. Mr. Stark is no longer with us. He's still alive, but in New Hampshire, and I don't think that really counts. So, he did a great job as Chair also when he was Chair, and we can thank him for that. We do have one cancellation, our postponement. We'd like to table to the next meeting first on the agenda would be Appeal number twenty-six-oh-one. It's practical difficulty appeal for Timothy Dutton, fifty-eight Ocean Avenue. And if you have any desire to sit in on that one, you can leave, because that will not be heard tonight. And, let's see where we at. I think motion for the minutes of the March, oh, sorry, the April twelfth minutes.
Motion for this president. Second.
And discuss another minutes.
Mr. Loizell have a chance?
Uh, no, let me just stay.
Okay. All in favor? That's unanimous with one statement. Okay, the first appeal is appeal number twenty-six-oh-two. It's practical difficulty request by Dale Temm, one sixty-one, Two-Rod Road Assessor's Map, R thirty-two, partial twenty-one A. This is a cable from the previous meeting for more information, and if we represent, excuse me, if we have representatives, and we'll go from there. This is tough word tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Sean Frank. I'm a civil engineer with Cibago Technics. With me tonight is Dale Temm of the applicant. As you recall, we were here last month. We were tabled, the board requested some additional information. So what we did obtain was specifically were the plans that had been referenced within the appeal that had been referenced back in two thousand and seven. I didn't find them totally enlightening, to be perfectly honest with you, but I think it did show a couple of lots that are kind of angled backs, that they didn't have the actual setback, if you will, the front setback, that was the road frontage associated with the individual lots. What we also obtained was the actual building permits that had been issued for those three exhibits that we had passed in for those specific lots. And I thought that some of them, specifically as part of Exhibit B, was very telling in the fact that they actually included a sketch associated with the building permit. And as part of that sketch, it actually showed the angled property line coming back off in Burnham Road. Again, as part of my supplemental submission, Mr. Chairman, that was shown as Exhibit B. And again, you know, very familiar, very similar, if you will, to the same type of lot that we were talking about. Our exact same type of situation, if you will, in terms of the road frontage angled quite drastically associated with the road to kind of pinch off and then go back. If you looked at the building permit, the issues that these folks were looking at were the fact that they did have the road frontage, they did have the required front and rear setbacks, they did have the actual area associated with the lot. So again, we thought that was very in keeping, if you will, with our lot associated with the proposal we had here. As we discussed, this was a lot that was created in two thousand and five. The way that the code, as we understood at that point in time and was interpreted, was the fact that, you know, it wasn't required, it wasn't interpreted that the frontage had to extend the full depth of the front yard setback. We had provided numerous examples of lots and subdivisions that actually depicted that. Obviously, those were approved lots within the subdivision. Obviously, the planning board couldn't approve those lots if it was the interpretation at that time that they did not meet space and bulk requirements for the zone. Again, the exhibits that were provided with the building permits, obviously, the code enforcement officer couldn't have issued those building permits if it wasn't his interpretation at that time that those lots met space and bulk requirements. So again, from our standpoint, it was just further proof, if you will, that up to the decision that had been referenced in two thousand and seven, that it was not an issue at that point in time, where the interpretation was inconsistent at that point in time, the fact that the road frontage had to be carried back all the way to the front setback. So with that, Mr. Chairman, again, it was more for supplemental information to you folks. We had gone through the six items associated with the variance. We'd be happy to go through that again if necessary, but aside from that, I think we would just say that, you know, you asked for some supplemental information. We hopefully have provided that to you. And aside from that, Dale Temm and myself would be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. We will go through it again, and we have a new member, and so I do want to go through it again, and also want to get whatever we decide on record, but we'll try and make it, we'll do it the light way. Why don't I open up the board for any questions regarding what we were trying to accomplish as far as explanations on the changes or issues of lots. This is specifically about the road frontage and the way the lot angled and how it has to be the width of the all the way back straight backs, so that you can have the envelope big enough to put the home.
Exactly.
That's the best way to describe it. Anything, before I do that, anything to add? Have you found out anything from research? Now, you have done some research that I think I can bring forward that will help. Just for the record, three of us here voted against the appeal that was used as an example that time, yourself, myself, and Mr. Blais. We're all here on that last one, when we turned down that other one. If it goes back to, huh?
Back to was seven?
Yeah.
Yours?
Yeah. Definitely. So, just back to the board for questions or concerns. Let me kind of summarize what I kind of feel. Yeah. I've tried to do a lot of research on this, and there are, as pointed out, numerous properties prior to the letter that came from Spaniotis, our attorney, that allowed for changes. However, after that letter, it was deemed, as far as I can tell and from what I've heard, from just making some phone calls and trying to get to handle what's going on and looking through the guidelines, is there was an unwritten rule as to that would be the way it would be done from that point on. And it looks like a couple of other organizations, I won't name the names, have used the same model based on what they assumed was a regulation since two thousand and five, what the date was on that letter. That brings up an interesting point to me, because it isn't, as far as I can see, anywhere in the guideline. And from what I've heard and checked into, it's never been voted on, it's never been put in the guidelines. It is a practice that took place after that vote.
What was the timing of that?
Two thousand and five is the letter from the attorney?
Two thousand and seven.
Two thousand and seven. And this lot was done in two thousand and five.
Correct.
So, there's a couple of things here that are interesting. Number one, it was allowed to be done, and it was before the change, and everything I can read is that the change was caused by that letter. I have everything I've heard, and again, it's hearsay, so you can take that hearsay as you will, but what you can do, count it or not count it, dismiss it or accept it. But in, prior to that, the rule was, good for you, congratulations, you beat the system. And after that, it came to a more formal format, but it was a zoning board, planning board standard rather than anything required. So, and nobody ever pushed it, so it never got tested. So that being said, I get that on the table. The other thing I think that's important, and I am still, I'll be candid, I didn't hide it the last time, and I'll still state where I stand on this. I do believe this meets the requirements for two reasons. Number one, it was standard operating procedure prior to two thousand and seven. There are numerous examples of that taking place in two thousand and seven. But most importantly, I go back to the intent of the ordinance. It's a farm, the zone is a rural farm, right? It's an RF, RF zone, isn't it?
It's an overlay type of thing. Brian, can you help me with that if I forget exactly?
Basically, it requires two hundred feet.
The underlying is the RF, and it's a two hundred feet of frontage and eighty thousand square feet.
And having my experience on the ordinance committee back in the day when I was in the council, the reason why you set up different standards for different areas in town is to limit the homes in a certain amount of area. You've got a four hundred feet piece of property that a house was built on the middle of, back before, more likely back before the ordinance was in place, and now you've got a property that was broken apart in two thousand and five. Is that correct? I want to make sure my facts are right.
That's correct, yes, two thousand and five.
And they did what was commonly known as this little triangle to get the two hundred feet to meet the rule, and then, as I was implying, I think I defined five or six was the, that were done like that. And then, we've still got the net result of the ordinance's intent, in my opinion, which is two properties for every four hundred feet, or one property for every two hundred feet. So, given the fact, there's no way that the Thames could have known that at the time, and it was standard operating procedure, or appeared to be, that there are other examples, and that I cannot find any evidence that anything in the town measures, nothing other than this letter that was put forward because of a totally different issue, was used as the new standard by the zoning board. I don't see how we can refuse this, but that's me. I'll let the board speak from there, and I'm only one vote, one opinion, but consistent with my last conversation. Open up to the board.
I mean, I agree with Mark. I mean, I think he's provided more evidence to basically support your argument here. And I mean, some of the lots that you've shown have even greener, what you want to call these triangle situations here, and they were able to build on them. And I honestly was thinking it was more of a triangle situation from last month, looking at this. I mean, I think I'm totally in agreement with you, Mark.
Thank you.
I agree with you also, Mark. I've got another concern, and I don't know how many other lots we have in this town that are affected by something like this, other than the one that you own.
But if they do their homework, they can just press them.
What's interesting is, and coming back to, just kind of, why don't we get on this for you, and I'll continue my thoughts.
I mean, I reviewed the minutes from the previous meeting, and I agree that based on what's been happening, I don't have any issues with the standards.
Mr. Chair, I asked for information from you, just because I got information from you on this, because I did have it up front, because I've come in so late. I thought you would shorten me information, which is why I was sitting here not saying anything.
Again, with a short.
Again. It's not a short joke.
I just left names out of anybody I talked to.
But what I did do was, I read through the notes from oh seven, because when you were, when we were talking about this on the phone, you had said that there were appeal notes from oh seven. So I looked those up, and there was one area that kind of caught my eye, it was probably about, and that was Appeal twenty-three seventy-two back in oh seven, and about four paragraphs in.
Which ones is that reference? Is that the one with this private road?
Same one.
Yes, same one.
Same one, okay. Just for people who don't know, what seems to be the trigger that made these changes is that somebody had two lots on Gorm Road, isn't it? I think it's Gorm Road.
Nine Drive.
And they wanted to put a driveway in and build two more lots behind it, but they didn't meet the minimum front setbacks, side, front, street furniture, thank you.
Correct.
And we denied it, and our town attorney supported that position because there wasn't enough street furniture. But somehow, back in two thousand and seven, it was interpreted as, by somebody, that that meant you had to have these new standards. And it is what's been done, but it's not part of, it's not part of ordinance, it's just what's been done.
One of the points that the Arab lawyer at the time had made, he said, he stated that the purpose of the front yard requirement was not necessarily located, to locate houses exactly on the street, and lots could not be on hammerheads or cul-de-sacs if they were the, if that was the purpose, meaning that they couldn't become a, thank you. I live on a cul-de-sac, so it kind of stuck in my mind. So I went to Google Maps, and I laid out my neighborhood, just to see if I would come in compliance with the way it sits today. And the answer is no. All the houses in the circle of the cul-de-sac don't have proper frontage, but they're still constructed back off the front of that street, the right distance. So then I looked out, I live in the neighborhood, in the Plutnail neighborhood, so then I backed out, looked at some other neighborhoods, because I remember some lots that had houses that sat back from the front, it just didn't seem normal, so I went to an area of even looked at that. And there were a couple of instances, and there's probably more like seven or eight instances in my neighborhood alone, where there's a back lot that they tried to get access to, and the one I'm talking about in particular is Powder Grove, where the frontage that that lot has is much less than their requirement. And there's a straight piece that goes back about seventy, eighty feet, and then there's a big chunk behind the existing homes that are there, and that house is sitting behind. So, I think, and that was back in the eighties, mid-eighties to late eighties, that those were constructed. So, that to me also proves your point that there's a lot of developers that probably have this circumstance that we might not do today, but back then, they were doing the best they could, development was happening so fast. It was a real bubble back then. So to keep up, people were throwing up tons of lots, and I think it just got by us. Now, it probably wouldn't get by us now that we're more educated, or, you know, we pay more attention, but I think it just got by us.
And to be candid with you, I do believe this needs to go to the ordinance committee to be discussed, because we still don't have an answer. I think it needs to go to the ordinance committee, because our position here does not set precedent from the town saying anybody can do that, as the previous one didn't either, it just happened to fall that way.
Right.
So, I'll be requesting that this go to the ordinance committee to be able to have.
I think that's, that's one.
I'll work with, as long as that's actually fair reason, we're working as to getting, I don't care what the answer is, I just don't think we need to know an answer.
I think we're exposed, because there could be other, a lot of other properties that try to do the same thing.
Yeah.
So, I guess to summarize, I'm in agreement with you, and my little research that I did do cut through, which was in that same direction.
I don't know, maybe you want to add what's already been discussed?
Okay. So, I do want to make a couple of points. The way the property is cut, if this is approved, do you have a picture of that? I have a way out of that.
This one right up on the screen.
Oh, thank you.
In this area where my cursor is.
Yeah.
That's the little sliver that gets to the two hundred.
Okay. Yeah, but, but then it also now is it down, so the setback would have to be at least past the first bump, right? We all in agreement of that? Because you got to, you got to measure it from.
Well, the setback is the fifty feet.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the fifteen and fifteen foot setbacks are mapped out in this, on this drawing. So, so in effect, from here to here, is roughly a hundred and forty plus feet. So it's a good rectangular geometry for a lot, it's just not carrying two hundred feet of frontage back to that fifty foot setback, back to this line right here.
Now, okay, we're okay, because what I was worried about is where that jag comes across, whether we have to have them go back another half foot, a foot, or whatever that is.
No, because their setback is, yeah, their setback is laid out fifty feet, required distance fifty feet back from the front property line between those two pings.
Thank you. Anything you wish to add?
No, not at all, Mr. Chair.
If I could open the public to this, anybody from the public to speak on this issue?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you very much.
Do me a favor and state your name, address, and we'll go from there.
My name is Erica Frank, and I'm an attorney from Windham, Maine. I'm here on behalf of the applicant's supporter, William Jordan. We have objection to the, to this proposal on a couple of different grounds. Number one is that we don't have any evidence that that little sliver of a jag was ever part of any plan until now. The deeds to my client's property do not include that sliver being cut out of their property. Their property line runs all the way to Two-Rod Road, straight down.
Ma'am, can I stop you for one second? That's a different issue than what we're dealing with.
Well, it's.
If it's not.
It's a frontage issue.
Well, no, it's a deed issue.
It's a title issue.
It's a title issue. If there's a title problem, that's a totally different, and it may be legitimate, I just don't know. What we understand is that, so I'm not challenging you or trying to, but if there's a title issue, I, that's something that needs to be done.
We don't believe that we have a title issue. We believe that the applicant does not have title to that property, therefore cannot be approved to build or to use that property as part of her application.
They may not. And if that's the case, they'd have to come back with a separate appeal.
Okay. The other, and that's why I'm putting this on the record, so that that can happen.
Thank you.
The other objection, or thing I should point out, is that the ordinance itself has a definition in Section Six, under definitions, lot lines. The line's bounding a lot. Whenever a lot abuts a street, the sideline of the street on the side abutting the lot shall constitute the lot line. So, the front of my client's lot is the street, based on the definition in the ordinance. It can't have a sliver cut out before it meets the street, according to the definition in Section Six. So that creates, again, another problem where they can't meet the footage requirements.
Again, I'm not going to challenge you on that, I'm only, I just know what we have for information. So, that would be a, that would be a separate case between the applicant and yourself.
Well, I think that the town has the obligation to make sure that the definition of lot line is met before an application can be approved.
Well, we're making our decisions, correct me if I'm wrong, we're making our decisions based on what we know for information. We're not attorneys.
I'm providing you the information.
But you're, you're providing it for the, for the next door neighbor.
Correct.
And that might be good, might not be good. It's also new, and the other people haven't heard anything about it, so it's kind of taken, as you know, you can't do that in law, so if we're taking this.
We just received notice of the meeting when everyone else did, so I prepared to.
No, what I mean is, you would have to disclose that to the other side prior to this, this is not a court.
I understand.
So, we're not going to go down that path. What we can do is, we can talk about it as it sits, and put a codicil in there that says if the lot is not two hundred feet, we're claiming, and the applicant's claiming, and the information we have says it's a two hundred foot lot, by that drawing and by the information we have. If this is clouding the title, that's a totally different conversation, and they don't have two hundred feet, they'll have to make the decisions from there.
Do you think we're not a criteria that you have, they have clear titles? Excuse me, I mean.
You have to have, right.
Okay, so I mean, if they're coming in here and challenging the title for the property, I mean, that's a pretty big talent, and I noticed that their deed does not have a description for their property, a breakdown. Is there a. That is correct. Did you find one? I mean, there is a description somewhere, which would easily be found on the registration sheet. There doesn't seem to have been a deed cut out and conveyed to anyone. That law apparently has been created on paper, but has never been separated in title from the larger portion of land, which my client's property has been deeded out in a deed from that larger portion. And as you're, you're correct, the only deed description that stands of their property is the remaining land that hasn't been divided yet.
I think it's troublesome if there's no property description for property that's split.
Board, um, we're not here to judge, we're not, our purview is not to make decisions on deeds and things like that. And the process in and of itself violates a regular court, because the appellant didn't even know that this was going to be coming out. So we can't even hear that issue. The question I have for you is, do we want to table this to let this get resolved, or do we want to approve it subject to that being finalized in court? And I'll give you an example of where I think this is a parallel. If you have a development and it says you can't have certain types of businesses in there, we don't look at whether or not that business meets the guidelines of that development. We look as to whether it meets the regulations of the ordinance, and it's up to the people in the development to deal with it as, as they deem fit. We've had numerous cases of that. I do not know whether or not, and I'm leaning towards you, I don't know whether or not this is similar to that. Um, but to me, from the information we've got, this is a surprise for all of us. I never like surprises. Um, so we're getting this here at the table. Wrong time to get it. Um, we haven't had any chance to do anything. We haven't had a chance to talk to our attorneys. Uh, to me, I don't, I think it's inappropriate that you came at this without, without future, to be candid with you. It needed to come to the board ahead of time, and there's plenty of time to do that. I'm not, that's a, a statement. Um, I don't know what the board feels as to how they'd like to proceed. This is kind of a blow.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Maybe, maybe the first thing we do is give the, um, appellant a chance to address that issue, since it was a, a mother parcel to begin with, and these lines were all created by the appellant. Am I correct?
Yes.
So, so is there, is there a description of these individual parcels that shows that this of Butter, uh, their property lines are as shown on the, on the plan?
Uh, Mr. Chairman and the board, I can only say that, uh, you know, the description for the Abutter's lot had been based, the description that we prepared for the Abutter's lot had been based upon this plan. Um, I have to admit, I don't have that deed in my hand in terms of describing that actual, the actual description associated with that. Uh, but it was our understanding, you know, that the deed had been prepared based upon that plan.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Was, were your prints developed from a survey, or was it developed from subsequent plot plans that you had?
It was developed by a survey. The surveyor actually prepared the plan and prepared the written description for the deed.
And Mr. Chairman, to the second point about the definition of lot lines, all the definition of lot line says is that wherever a lot abuts a street, the sideline of the street, which is, if I can get my cursor on it, this is the sideline of the street, okay, all the way from, from here to here and beyond. The sideline of the street on the side abutting the lot shall constitute the lot line. That's all that's saying is that is, that right line where this property abuts the street is the front property line of that property. That, I'm sorry, that proves nothing. It's just that that's the definition saying that this is the front property. It means it has no relationship to anything we're talking about.
But Mr. Chairman, a question around the survey, because we only judge what I judicially judge based on the information we have. And the information we have is based on a survey that was done by a professional engineer. So we can question the ability of that professional engineer, or we can move forward, assuming that that information is correct. Now, I don't, I'm not in a position to question where that information came from, and the neighbors have every right to question where that comes from and whether it's valid, but that falls outside of our jurisdiction. We're here to judge based on the information we're given. If we see something that's obvious that doesn't make sense, and we question that data as being false, then we have the ability to send them back and get more. But I see nothing here that would say we need to go back and get more information, because that was done on a professional survey, and I trust that they went to a reputable surveyor, and now that liability falls on that professional engineer.
Ms. Sheen?
I mean, they need to present evidence, and I think what concerns me is the, just the deed has no description. I mean, I think that's just what kind of stops me for a minute, if they kind of, kind of opened their eyes to the fact that, yes, we have all, you know, the plan and the plot and everything, but I think just someone who's used the papers and deeds and things like that to not see something in writing saying, "This is ours." Um, I think it's just, again, it's a surprise in your development, and I agree with the chairman that it's, we do not like surprises.
What's the, what is the board? I, I, my personal opinion and, uh, is that we make a vote based on what we have for information and had for information provided to us prior to this meeting, with a codicil that says, in the event that the two parties find that the answer on the part, the street is different than what it is, then our approval would not be valid. And they'd have to come back to deal with that at that time. That would be my preference, but I'm not sure where the board sits, or, uh...
It's like you had...
I'm a little bit concerned about the, the fact that if it's not recognized that this little strip of land, um, is valid, then that whole lot is invalid.
Right, but that's, as, as Mr. Lawrence has pointed out, that's not going, that information is not going to be the piece that gives us the information that we need. We've just gotten kind of slammed with some surprise information.
I understand that. But my point is that why would the town ever accept a lot being split?
Oh, I see, Chairman.
Without the correct front yard footage, regardless of whether it's in a, regardless of whether it's in a a deed or not.
Well, I think Brian said the last meeting, people don't need town approvals to split a lot like that, right?
You can, you can sell any kind of property that you want. It's when you come for a building permit that we have to prove it's a buildable lot. That's why we're here tonight. Miss, Mrs. Tem would like to build on this lot. I couldn't issue her a building permit because it did not meet the yard front definition in our ordinance. That's why we're here. But you can sell any parcel in any configuration. It's getting a building permit that becomes the, becomes the problem.
Okay, Mr. Frank, approach the, uh, what do you think? The survey that was done, was it a stamped drawing?
It was.
By a PD?
A, a licensed surveyor, I'm sure.
Correct. Okay. Again, in my opinion, the board can't, shouldn't be questioning the certified document that was presented to us. I mean, I can question any data that's out there that's not backed up by someone who's professional as being hearsay or their opinion. But if we've got a document that was presented by an engineering firm, by a certified surveyor, they could possibly have made an error, that's possible. But I'm trusting that data. I don't think that should stop us from moving forward. Even though it's not written up in the deed verbiage, they base that on something, and they do that every day, so I'm relying on them to do it correctly. That doesn't take away the ability of anybody who's a neighbor in questioning that data. But the information coming to us, I don't have the, in my opinion, I have the right to question that. It seems like certified information, and it's valid information.
Nice. We have a very, very powerful group of people here that know a lot. Mr. Sheen?
Well, so, and I tend to agree with Mr. Lawrence on this. I mean, it's, as you said, we're, we're basing our information on staff documents that have been presented for us. Uh, we can only, from my opinion, we can only really vote on what we have right here in front of us that was submitted. Um, if there's an issue of whether or not the survey was done correctly or incorrectly, that falls back to the surveyor who did the survey when it was, when it was completed. And any argument or contention or conflict against it should be settled in that venue and not here. It falls back towards, you know, it, maybe it requires another survey to have that, to have that done, you know, by both parties in agreement of what, whatever happens there is, as far as having another survey done determining exactly where these, where these lines are.
And I have a question about who, who actually prepared the deed for Lot A? You know, perhaps they got it wrong.
The same description.
If you, Mr. Frank, can you take my phone? No, no worries.
The same description has carried out through three or four deeds. I'm assuming it came from a survey somewhere, but I don't have access to that survey. Um, but the deed, um, you mentioned having, you have a certified survey in front of you here. We also have recorded deeds in front of us here that are very clear that there's a problem with the survey. I don't know how the town can ignore that issue. I mean, for example, if I came in with an application and I just had a surveyor come over and I pull him, here's my line, draw me a map, and I come in and apply, there, there must be some verification that I actually own what they drew on the map.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Yes.
What deed are you speaking to?
I'm speaking to the deed that, um, Ms. Tem first originally carved out my client's lot.
Okay, but the, the deed that you're saying has definition is not this applicant's deed.
It is not her deed. It is...
Then we haven't seen that, so you're telling me information...
She doesn't have one, though.
But, Ms., please, you're telling me information that I'm not privy to, and I'm supposed to trust your word over that document I see that's certified?
I have documents here that I can show to you.
It's not evidence in this case.
It's also not appropriate at the last minute.
Well, this is a public meeting, and I understand that we should appear at the time...
You're absolutely welcome, you're absolutely welcome to discuss and share whatever you'd like, and I'm not going to shut you down. But as far as we're concerned, the information that we're supposed to be looking at, we need a reasonable, we, we should not be surprised like this, and an attorney should know that. We should not be at this moment, neither should the applicant, at this moment, get surprised with this, because it, it would be thrown out of court in a heartbeat, as you know.
I believe that my clients were here at the last meeting and were aware that my clients objected to the, to the project, which is why they then retained me, and I am now here on their behalf.
They have objected, that's very true, but nothing about the, the deed issue has come up.
You guys unfortunately didn't make any provision. We keep referencing something that we don't have in front of us. All we have is the information that they presented to us, that we proceeded to look at.
And feel free to, I'd like you, anything else you'd like to say, feel free, and, and I'd like the board to just give, um, Ms. Frank the courtesy of listening.
I, I mean, I think I've said what I need to say, and I, I agree with your point, that it, it's a very troublesome, I think, for any town to approve a project when there's a clear challenge with legal signs, deeds here available for review, that would put that sliver of land into question. And in addition to that, I, I understand Mr. Frank addressed some previous lots that had similar configurations, but I haven't seen any that have such an odd configuration that is, it, it doesn't make planning sense to me to have a lot that, I mean, it just doesn't look right, for, for one thing, but it doesn't seem to make sense. Um, it doesn't seem to be consistent with the rest of the neighborhood, and if this, if this permit is granted, it's going to have detrimental effects on my client's property values and the use of their land. Uh, when they purchased the property, there was no anticipation that that was a buildable lot next door to them, because of the configuration that they were made aware of when they purchased the land.
I don't want anything about that, to be honest.
So any, for my, my side, I mean, any conflicts and eventual resolution regarding this, regarding these property deeds and, and the conflict with property lines should be resolved outside of this venue. I mean, we're not in a position to, um, as, as was mentioned, you know, to, to draw judgment on this, especially when we don't have the information in our packets submitted to us. Um, that's, you know, when, when we receive information, it's given to us in the packet, and if, if information isn't submitted, we can't really see or make a clear decision without having, having it be resolved. All we can trust is the stamped documents by licensed professionals that have been submitted to us. Um, so again, reiterate my opinion that, you know, this falls outside of our, our purview in this and that. It falls back on the surveyor to, and you folks to establish exactly where those property lines are. And any, any contentions or any resolutions should be done at that point outside of the venue.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so I get the impression from the board, Ms. Sheen, but I really want to fall back on your experience on this. Do you agree with the continuing forward at this point, or what are your thoughts?
I am, I mean, in my experience in the board, I mean, I don't have a problem with your recommendation of passing it. I mean, I, again, we're making our decision on the evidence. That was presented to us today. I feel like you can go through the criteria.
Thanks, Joyce. Other members?
If there were legal action, they can stop the process once they file whatever paperwork goes with the court, correct?
Right.
So even if we make judgment, if they file papers, that stops the ability for the appellant to move forward, correct?
That's right.
I mean, I think it's important to clarify that they're, they're talking about a title dispute, but I don't want the town to incur an appeal of our decision because they're going to appeal our decision instead of passing out the title.
I think we're protected in that way, and that we didn't judge based on information that we didn't have in front of us. The judge will look at it and say, what did you have in front of you if you had that information?
Are we going to pass, are we going to vote on something that we know they're going to appeal? I mean, I'm trying to...
Anybody could do that. You know, and the, and the example of that, the best example I've seen is when we've approved things that are not allowed in a neighborhood's, um, whatever they call it, the, the condo docs, whatever it happens to be. And it falls where it falls. If the neighbors want to sue, they can sue. If they don't, they don't have to. Uh, but we've given them permission from a town point of view. We don't care.
Oh, you're talking about deed restrictions or conditions?
Right, yeah. Is that a fair, fair statement?
Can I have the appellant approach the podium again, please?
Oh, that's all right.
No problem.
Public, the public is also, it's still open as a public session, so.
Uh, my question for you is, if you felt there was going to be pressure for potentially a lawsuit filed, would you be willing to work with the neighbors to try and define whether this layout actually meets the deed or not? Is that something you'd be interested in, or something you would not want to do?
Oh, I think it's something we'll certainly be very interested in, yes. Uh, again, obviously, you know, from a title standpoint, we were certainly, as, as I stated, the, the surveyor who had done the survey, who had actually prepared, you know, we call it a, a, a suggested deed description, a written, that he provides a meet and balance description, if you will, which is given to the attorney. The attorney obviously takes that description and then obviously, as you know, can add language to it and those sorts of things, to actually prepare the deed, so.
If we were to table this for another month, would it hurt the applicant's ability to do what she needs to do and the timing that she needs to do it in?
No.
Well, I'm just making a suggestion. If we were to table this, would you open yourselves up to meet with the neighbors to iron out the details around this so that we know whether it did or did not match? Does that be something that would be workable for you folks? I think we have an option on the table if we wanted to table.
My only concern about tabling is, we're tabling on something that, number one, came at the last minute. I do not want to reward that behavior. And we're tabling on something that really doesn't concern this board. Um, we can, and I, and, you know, me, I love tabling things. But, but I don't see any reason to table this. I do think it needs a codicil that says, in the event that, to protect the town, in the event that the two parties,
Do not reach agreement?
Do not reach agreement, and this, well, it isn't resolved by a court. If it's two parties, if, for instance, Party B could never bring it to court, and Party A would be stuck with whatever we decided in the tabling, and that's not going to accomplish a thing. If there's, if there's legal grounds, let that work its way through the court system. And we put the defense in here for the town, saying if it doesn't meet our definition, then this is no longer void, and she'd have to return.
I, I would agree with the chair, as far as proceeding forward with what we have presented to us with that codicil, because we're covering all the bases if we're doing this.
And I, I think it's a prudent course of action in this case, because that way, if it is proven that the appellant does have the ability to go forward and do this, they don't have to come back here. They can just move forward with it. However, you know, if contingent upon the resolution of that, that conflict, then they can take it to whatever next steps. They have to take it. Whereas in this case, if we, you know, we approve it with, with the contingency that you're proposing, um, as it turns out that the appellant is, is okay to go, go forward with their project, they can do so without any more hindrances coming back before us.
And that's kind of what I was asking the question. It would be their option to exercise that right if they wanted to, but if they could also move forward if they wanted to as well.
Yes.
And I think we're covering that in the contingent, too.
Mark, can I ask the appellant a question?
Absolutely. Could you take the microphone, please? Could you take the microphone, please? Or your representative either. And again, we're still open, public hearing is still open.
She's the only-
We promised Mr. Blais won't bite.
Yeah, I think-
What is your plans for this lot? Is this lot for sale?
This lot is for sale. When I owned 14 acres, and I asked the surveyor to divide off frontage with the house that I grew up in, that they own now, with acreage, and then my husband likes to pound nails, and at some point, we thought maybe he'd like to build a little something and sell it, or we'd retire there. Well, things have changed, but, so they divided off this lot, and then I sold the remaining lot to someone else. So I have been approached three times by someone who's wanted to buy the lot.
Do you have a sales contract work?
On the third time. The other two, I did- I changed my mind, I didn't want to sell it. We were going to keep it in case he wanted to build something, my husband.
You currently now have a sales contract on this lot?
Not anymore because of the process has gone too long, they had to move on.
And you're not planning on building on it now, yourself?
Well, I can't build because there's a problem, apparently.
Well.
But, yes, I may move over there myself, because, like I said, things have changed.
That division you spoke of earlier of the lot, that was 2005, that I heard, correct?
Correct. It was all divided, the 14 acres was all divided at one time into three parcels.
Okay.
I'd like to go through the, well, anybody else from the public push to speak?
Actually, I-
Go free.
If I could, before he speaks, Sean, was this plan, was this plan recorded? It's just a survey plan, but it's not recorded.
Larry Chase, for the record, I am the father of the homeowners, and I'm a builder in Mass. And back in Mass, we have very tight guidelines to go by. And the problem that I have with this whole thing, and I've only got into it just recently, the part that would bother me as a board, that there is no deed on their side that states that that sliver is there. And I understand that a surveyor is responsible for his work, but if there's no deed to back that, I would be a little concerned on his behalf that I would even present this without having a deed. Whereas my daughter's property is deeded very clearly by the, you know, the state of Maine, and it is descriptive that that sliver is not in it. So, I being, if I was on the board, I would be like, without a deed on their side, I'd be a little bit suspicious of this sliver, and I'd be a little concerned about this because I wouldn't want to get in any trouble. I would table this until both parties had the deed. If both deeds match up perfectly, I would say, we got a problem, that sliver's not on the deed, and then this guy doesn't get in trouble. It doesn't matter to us because we will, you know, go against this because our deed does not show that sliver. And we have a deed in title insurance and all that good stuff that says this is a clear title with no sliver on it. So, that's a little concerning to me, a little bit concerning, that you guys would even consider looking at that, and to shoot down the woman that we brought in and paid that does this for a living, that has our deed, and we just obtained her, you know, two days ago. We were asked to come back to this meeting, it was tabled. So, I'm a little upset that the chair of the board would even say, you know, this is last minute to bring it in. We were just asked to come here for this meeting. So, I have a little bit of trouble with that. I just don't think it's right. I mean, we have a deed, and I know it didn't get presented in the packet.
I don't want to confuse you all, but, you know, they were here at the previous meeting when we tabled it.
Yep.
And so they've had 30 days to come and be prepared, and we actually suggested they get a lawyer?
My daughter's father-in-law was here and not myself. They did obtain a lawyer, and she's at our meeting now, and she has a clear deed.
The problem is standard operating procedures, and I don't want to get into that.
I understand.
Standard operating procedures, you do not throw something out of board at the last minute and expect us to use it. It's not a reasonable expectation.
I would be a little suspicious that they don't have a deed and they have it on the claim. That's all I'm saying.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else who's to speak to this issue?
I mean, I just want to say it's actually not uncommon for deeds to not have descriptions in them, so.
It's also not uncommon for them to be incorrect.
Yes, we can write them. There are typos.
So, what I'd like to do is, anybody else who's to speak on this issue? Seeing now I'm closing the public hearing sections, meaning I'd like to go back to the items on the practical difficulty variance, and like to do them case by case and vote on them separately. And, Ms. Frank. Sean, can you take the microphone again? I want to go through the, I want to go through the items again. The first one, I guess, is the most appropriate.
Yes, I have it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. The need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the general conditions in the neighborhood.
And as we stated, was the request for the variance was specific to the property as that the existing house that had been located there in 2005, as related to the straight frontage, required the angled property line, which led to the decrease in the width of the front yard and not to the general conditions of the neighborhood.
Board members have any questions, Ms. Frank, on that item? All right. Move that we approve section one, number one of this section. All in favor? All right, a second, I'm sorry. A second, all in favor? That's unanimous.
Any positions on this?
If you'd like, feel free, yeah.
I think it'd be valuable.
Great, go ahead.
Anybody else want to go first? The reason I agree that this is not a concern is the applicant showed, I don't know, five or six different cases where there were lots that did not have the full width at the road frontage. I personally looked up one myself and found that my cul-de-sac, six of the properties did not meet it. So, that's not evidence, but I think the applicant came in and showed what they needed to show to prove that case.
Other members wish to comment? To me, it's obviously the unique circumstances of the property, which is that triangle, and so I have no problem with that, that being, that is enough reason for that. So, I need to do a motion again on that. Move that number one is approved. Any second, all in favor? Again, that's unanimous. Number two, the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not have an unreasonably detrimental effect on either the use or fair market value of the abutting property. This is an important one.
From our standpoint, Mr. Chairman, we're talking about a single-family house lot. Again, it's basically divided 200 feet of frontage between what was a 400 foot of frontage on the roadway. The lot itself will actually have the 80,000 square feet, will meet all the setbacks in terms of front, side, and rear setbacks, and we certainly didn't see a single-family house being constructed on that lot that's having an undesirable effect on the neighborhood.
Board members have any questions, Ms. Frank? Any members have comments regarding this section? I think it's important that we discuss this because it does affect the next town neighborhood.
My big concern in this area would be around if the density of the housing in this area went up drastically, if there weren't other properties that had houses that are relatively close, if there were just single homes who are talking large distance away from each other, I think it would be more of a concern. But when I look at the aerial map, there are other buildings in this area, so it doesn't appear to change the density, which I don't think changes the character of the neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, the reality is, I would love to live next to a brand-new construction because it only really improves the value of your property.
I mean, I don't really have anything to add to that. I agree with both of those points. You know, you're in a neighborhood surrounded by single-family lots. According to the plan, it's somewhere set up, that's been shown there already.
Anybody else? My view on this is that I go back to the intent of the ordinance, and the RF wanted to have 200-foot spaces between homes, not necessarily between homes, but lot sizes to limit the amount of homes that could be there. If you've got a 400-foot space with two houses, there's no difference between a 400-foot space with two houses put side by side on the 15, it still has 15-foot setbacks. So you could have two 200-foot pieces of property and both of them put them 30 feet apart. So that doesn't really plain to apply. To me, you're getting the exact same result. So, in my opinion, it will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as it is consistent with the expectations of the underlying zone. To have a motion?
I move.
Sir? Discussion on motion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Number three, practical difficulty is not a result of an action taken by the applicant or prior owner. Again, this is a tricky one because the applicant is the one that drew up the deed.
That's a tough one, yes.
No, I think we spent a long time talking about how the actions were not hers, it was the board's decision in 2007.
I agree, the information that was presented around the neighbor's deed is data, but in my opinion, it's not based on fact because we don't have copies of it in front of us. So if this were to go to court, I couldn't judge based on that. So, I can't make a decision on the information I don't have, but with the information we do have, unless the applicant decides to table, which is their choice, and they decide to move forward, then it opens them up for a court case, that's their decision. So, based on that, the information that I have, I don't think this is, is this is something done by this particular applicant. It was the ruling that was done in 2007 after the lots were split in 2005.
And my position tied to this is very similar, thank you, Ms. Shoup, and very tied to what Ms. Shoup said and both of you actually. To me, the issue is, there was no, there was no rule against this at the time, it was actually standard practice, as we can very easily establish, and the rule that went in 2007 is not a rule, it's a guideline, as far as I can see, because there's nothing written in law.
It's actually just an interpretation.
Interpretation?
It's a change in interpretation.
Thank you, that's the best-
Nothing changed in the ordinance, it was the interpretation that changed.
And the interpretation, I support the interpretation. As a matter of fact, I think it probably should be that way, but it, and it's held up for 10 years, and numerous CEOs have taken that position, so it's not new, but it's still after the properties were split, and that is the demarcation mark, much like 1992 would have been the demarcation mark for, if your home was built prior to 1992, you don't have to follow the same rules. I see this as no different than that. So I'm okay with that. Now, do we have a motion on that?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? There's no other feasible alternative, I'm sorry, there's no other feasible alternative is available to the applicant except the variance.
Exactly, Mr. Chairman, and obviously with the 80,000 square feet, there is no other feasible alternative to this lot being a buildable lot without the variance, as we've discussed.
Any discussion, any questions or any discussions?
I agree, that's pretty clear. Without a change, without us agreeing to it, it can't be done.
Yeah, it's clear. I consider one exception to that, and that would be if the standards of the town were challenged, and it was a challenge to the CEO's position, that would be a different conversation. That would be the only other way. We'd still end up in the same place with the same questions. So I see no difference whether that's the case or not, and the CEO did exactly what he should have done, which is use the standards that we've been using for the last 10 years or so, so.
I offered that alternative to the appellant to appeal for an administrative appeal to challenge my interpretation of the ordinance. They preferred to go for the practical difficulty grant.
Good, thank you. So, any discussion on that? Questions, comments, motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? That's unanimous. The granting of variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with surrounding properties.
And as you may recall, as part of our initial submission, we included the tax map, which showed the two nearest properties to the north of this actually had single-family homes, which should simply be, the widths of those lots were approximately 165 feet and 150 feet, which is very in keeping with this proposed lot, with this lot. So we saw this as bringing the property more nearly in conformance with the surrounding property.
Questions? I come back to the fact that it's 400 feet with two houses. The ordinance allows for 400 feet, two houses. The rule says 200 per house, but in that result, the intent of the ordinance is to keep houses limited, and it doesn't do any effect whatsoever to this neighborhood, other than what the ordinance was originally designed to do.
I think based on the information, the appellant's provided evidence to support that.
I agree with that, Mark.
Do we have a motion? Let's get down here. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Now, the granting of variance will not have an unreasonably adverse effect on the natural environment.
I certainly didn't see any adverse impact on the natural environment due to the construction of one dwelling unit in accordance with local building codes.
Any questions to the applicant? You're going to have to do sales tests, all that stuff-
Absolutely, it's past the soil.
... requirements, so nothing changes there.
It's the same density, so.
Okay. Any questions, a motion?
I move.
All in favor? That's unanimous. The property is not located in sure, it's not in the flood zone or anything.
Well, the sure, that's correct, yeah.
And the last two, the dimensional standards, those provisions, excuse me, provisions of this ordinance which relate to the lot area, lot coverage, frontage, and setback, including buffer requirement. It meets side setbacks, it meets rear setback, it meets front setback-
Correct.
-the way we're designing this, and the buffer issue, I don't clarify that stuff for anyone.
I'm not familiar with the buffer issue.
Is that when two zones conflict with each other?
A buffer is, yeah, it could be when two zones, a different residential zone and a business zone or commercial zone are abutting with one another. It could be a wetland buffer, it could be, in some cases, the wetland buffer is 25 feet, and then there's a 15-foot buffer to the wetland buffer, so, you know, it's been anything.
Okay. That's not really a voted item, the next one is, the case where the strict application of the dimensional standards of the ordinance to the property for which the variance is sought would both preclude a use of property which is permitted in the zone in which it is located and also would result in significant economic injury to the applicant.
Yeah, as we've discussed, Mr. Chairman, obviously with all the variance and the fact that then we don't have a buildable lot. Basically, we have an 80,000-square-foot unbuildable lot, so, you know, it's quite a difference, obviously, in terms of the economic impact associated with that.
Comments from the board? To me, this is probably the easiest one. Ms. Tem, it was your family that broke the lot out, correct?
Correct.
So, just for the record, couldn't hear it, she's Ms. Tem, it was their family that did that. I have a real hard time believing that they would intentionally eliminate a lot to be built on at the time, so, making the lot useless of value, and the applicant did volunteer to pay the nonusable price for the property at the last meeting, but I specifically asked whether they'd pay the usable value, and the answer was specifically no. So, in my opinion, that is easily settled. Do you have any comments from other board members?
And also, the previous attempts, the tenants took the lot for sale, showed intent that there was a lot there to tell.
And the applicant did tell us that it's, pretty much their intent went along with her husband wanting to build something there. They wouldn't conclude themselves from doing that, potentially.
Anybody have that in? Do we have a motion on number A, I'm sorry, B1 and 2, I'm going to combine those.
Take the motion.
B1 and 2, have a second?
Second.
All in favor of B1 and 2, or VB6, the words with the definitions and the meanings, I believe those have been met. All in favor? Home favor? Is that yes? Just want to make sure you're a yes. Are you a yes or a no?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you. That's unanimous on that. Okay, so help me out with this, but I'll bring a motion forward on this one. I look to approve. Appeal number 2602, as requested, with the codicil that in the event there is a court ruling against the appellant that establishes that they do not have that 200-foot frontage, this approval would in fact become null and void. They would have to resubmit if they felt like they chose to with the new information that the board currently does not have. Any add to that? Do you have a second on that?
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Anybody who'd like to see how to? Home favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Sorry, we didn't get you the answer you wanted, but there are options.
Okay. Should have happened a long time ago.
Master room? Did you go with us?
Good thing we have him here. This shift is taking.
Like, you guys are all going to heaven. You're going to heaven.
Need a second to get organized, so. I'm without my second sort of diomancy. I don't know what to do.
Not this time. Maybe given the microcellular members.
I think you should possess that the town has moxie in vending machines, for the.
How do we need? Oh, moxie. Okay. We have appeal number 2603, practical difficulty request by The Rock Church, 66 Gorham Road, Assistant Map R58, Parcel 19. My representative, if you could say your name and position and address, that would be great.
My name is Tom Greer from Pickham and Greer. I'm a civil engineer on the project, and we have an office in Portland. With me tonight is Pastor Eric Samuelson and a church member, Chris Wilson, in order to provide moral support as much as anything else. What I would like to do is sort of walk you through the exhibits, make sure you know what we have for exhibits. We have a fair number of them that you have in your package, and make sure that you fully understand the process that we went through to get here. This practical variance is extremely important to the church. Without it, it puts it in an extremely difficult position in order to meet the needs of the church, and hopefully, when we are done presenting our case, you feel the same way. We are glad to see that there is a practical variance within the ordinance. We think that that's a community benefit and that the board has the opportunity to approve things that might not meet the ordinance exactly, but yet provide a community benefit. And we think that we meet those standards, and we think that this is a perfect project where the practical variance would come into play, and the board would be pleased to be able to approve it.
And just to tie to that comment, many towns have not adopted the option for having this, and Scarborough has chosen to adopt that option, which is great.
That's correct. I was surprised to see it there. I would have said the chances of them getting this in any other town, it's pretty close to zero, so we're pleased to be in Scarborough.
Again, Scarborough has been, we've gotten a bad rap over the years regarding building, and I got to say, it's just wrong. People, this is a town, it's a very easy town to work with.
What I have here on the board is a picture of the building that they're looking to build. We've started this process and are looking to upgrade the whole site so that it meets the current design standards of the town of Falmouth, both from the building point of view as well as landscape and parking. And we think that overall, this is going to be a great benefit to the church as well as to the community as a whole. The church has been extremely successful in its mission and has a fair number of members, and it's growing all the time. And we look to be able to expand so that we can cut down the number of services that we hold every Sunday morning and make it a more community with everyone there at the same time versus having to come at staggered times, you don't get to meet the entire congregation. So that's the church look that we're going to put together. Obviously, that goes to the planning board, and the planning board will make that determination.
Check the bottom plate?
Oh, yeah, there's a light on. Great, I'll use this one. This is the existing site aerial photograph with Gorham Road here up to the site. This is the existing church in here. This was, the access to it comes in in two locations off Gorham Road. And what we're looking to do is expand both parking back here and the building there. One of the things that we'd like to point out is that this building was built originally in 1988, and that site plan showed a boundary line that was what we've been using all along from that 1988 plan, which was 300 by 600 feet, which is what's in the deed and what we've submitted in our package as the title search. When they bought the deed, that went along with that same boundary line. What we're looking to do is expand the church in this location where the dark-colored building is located with this, the existing building in here and parking in the back. Those are meeting the design standards of the planning board, where parking is encouraged to be in the rear, and buildings are intended to be out at the street frontage to so that you have a more of a village atmosphere. We're at the very edge of the village, but this fits in with that scheme, and it's why we're out at the front of the site. And so what we're looking to do is build in this location and bring that forward and put the parking along the back, and then we'll have some stormwater management back in here. So as part of this project, we will be bringing the site up to current standards for stormwater management, and there aren't any wetlands on the site. That helps us meet one of the standards where we have no fire-related impact. We're actually improving the overall stormwater management portion of the site.
This is the first piece of property that has no wetlands in Scarborough.
This is the same. Someone tried to take this. I can see that it's not, I'm not the first to damage it. Hopefully, if we use it one at a time.
However, the last one does have to buy the new one.
Yeah. This is the 1988 plan that was approved by the planning board, and its boundary line that you see here comes all the way out to where we used it on the 2015 plan, where the building was built, the stormwater management was in the back, and we work our way all the way around in the same piece. What this plan missed was that starting in 1966, the MDOT had actually widened the right-of-way of Route 114, and it starts right at our boundary line. So the property that is beside us in this direction has a narrower boundary line than we do, and then what they did was they rewidened it so that it was 100 feet wide through here. And that was done prior to this site plan, and this site plan didn't pick it up. And we purchased the property and believed the site plan was originally approved and went through the mortgage survey and the deed and all of that, all referenced the larger project, larger property that's out through here. That's.
Did you also go to the planning board with that?
We did. This was originally approved by the planning board, and in 2015, they went and got some additional parking put back here and a very slight addition put on the back, you know, 12-foot wide addition.
What was the year that that was done? Not the first, no, the other part?
Uh.
When you first went to the planning board?
This went to the planning board, and then we went back to the planning board for additional parking, I believe in 2015.
How about the older one? The first time?
88, 1988.
1988, thank you.
And the DOT took this right-of-way in '66, and that was not picked up by either the original designer nor did we, because you read the deed, the deed gives you this description.
How far down Gorham Road does that right-of-way go?
Goes all the way along right-of-way. If you go through the DOT plans, several places, they've widened it out in different sides, and then it comes back to the original one and then widens back out. In this particular location through here, it was widened to 100 feet. The reason we discovered the issue is we had a meeting with the town staff where the town engineer is going through the Route 114 improvement projects, and the difference that they had on their plan was they had some stormwater management in the sidewalk that comes back onto our property pretty significantly. So what we did was put together this graphic, which we think is the most telling graphic that's there. The blue here is the town's plan for widening and improving Route 114. What we did was took their plan and lined up the survey items that were similar to ours. There's a hydrant out here, there's a telephone pole, there's a culvert, the culvert crossing the road here. We lined those up to come up with the two plans and laid them one over the other. What you get is our boundary line is out here, and their boundary line is 12 feet further back in this location here. And so it makes our building nonconforming when you look at those boundary lines versus what we had originally planned on if you put the deed together by the deed description, the boundary by the deed description. So in our opinion, we're asking for the practical variance because the condition was created by MDOT taking the right-of-way, not by anything that we did as the applicant. We've been working closely with our neighbor, Mr. Berg, who owns these properties here. He's very much in favor of this project. He's granted us an easement along this edge to do some grading and landscaping and buffering along that edge that's on his property. We think we fit into the neighborhood as a community service that you would expect in any village, so we think we're in keeping with the character of the village by adding a new building and bringing it up to current standards and making the landscaping and the environmental piece come together. We think we meet the intent of the variance that we're not a detriment to the overall neighborhood. One of the things that we would like to point out here, if you look at the setback with this building here, it's virtually the same as what our building would be if it were built in this configuration. So that when you drive down Route 114, you will see buildings the same distance back, which is keeping with the character of the neighborhood. And unfortunately, our neighbor here is built more in the back away from the buildings, but this is in keeping with what the character of the village is intended to be.
Is that in the same zone?
I believe they are. The intent was to keep the building out near the front and make them pedestrian-friendly. What you see in this Gorham Road improvement piece is when they do the 114 improvement project, this is a sidewalk that they're building all the way along, and they've pushed it back so that it's along the edge of the right-of-way, and it's more pedestrian-friendly. It'll be 10 feet wide, so it can be plowed and maintained fairly easily in the wintertime. It's easier for bikes and pedestrians to use it. So if you're a young bike rider, you might not want to ride in the traffic lane, but it's out here. These islands in here will be stormwater management facilities that will help treat stormwater from the road. We're working with the town so that we can cooperate with them and either participate with them in treating our stormwater in the same location to make it all work, which is why we got here, is we found out this discrepancy. So we were pretty comfortable with that. All in all, we think we meet all of the criteria in the application. What I'd like to do is have Eric go through some of the church pieces and how it impacts the church, both in terms of its use and why we think it's a benefit for the town to approve this practical variance.
One more question before I let you.
Yep.
Has there been any talk about lights? I've heard numerous times of traffic lights there. Not that we.
A traffic light?
Yeah, I was just wondering what the status is on that. I honestly don't know.
Yes, we've been working with a traffic engineer who's doing a traffic study and sort of put on hold until we get by this. But the information I have from the traffic study is it may trigger the warrants necessary for a traffic light for Sunday morning. All of the rest of the week, it doesn't. There's not enough traffic in and out in order to require the light. So the feeling is, for the short period of duration for Sunday morning, that putting in a traffic light really isn't in the best interest of the community. Nobody wants to drive to work and stop for a light that there's nobody coming out of there. So we think it's not the right place to do it. There may be some other traffic demand management techniques that we can use in order to work through those issues.
Thank you.
One of the questions was whether or not the shoulder on the far side is wide enough to create a little bit of a slip lane so that when you do get left-hand turns coming in there, you can slide by on the right without creating a hazard. That's where we started dealing with the staff, and we'll continue that through the planning board process.
Thank you.
Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, my name's Eric Samuelson from The Rock Church. It's a privilege to be here with you all today. I want to thank you all for your support. Church moved to the Scarborough community in 2011, and it's been a tremendous experience for us as a church. And so we've really found that the combination between people, business, community, and township, it's been a great environment for our church. And I'm very thankful to be here today. Really, what I would want to add to Mr. Greer's comments, there were really two things when we moved into the facility that were obviously deficient. The first was the construction of the facility that we moved into. That was a phase-one part of the plan. That's why it's set so awkwardly far back from the road. It doesn't match the business environment or even the current construction standards that would have that typical 30-foot setback. It was built that way with the intention for the facility to grow forward towards the road, build an expansion forward, and then have more parking spaces out back. So we really are trying to move forward with that plan, bring the building more in line with some of the original intent that goes along with that. The one thing that you would not know, and that's pretty obvious to you, I'm sure, even as you drive by on Route 114 regularly, the one thing that you would not know is that inside the building, they had actually, in many ways, I think, built it incorrectly. There was a lack of understanding of the use of space and facilities. They created a very large gathering space with a very small transition entry-exit, what we would call fellowship space, and not really enough classrooms. Those of you that have been in Scarborough for a significant amount of time, you know that really, there's been two churches that have been through that building. I wasn't here long enough to know exactly Oak Hill's history, but I did see with what happened with Harvest Bible Chapel, no longer being able to support that facility. And I don't think that helps the town. I don't think that helps the image, and it certainly doesn't help the property along the way. So we did major renovations inside the building. Took us a while to get to the outside. When we moved in, one of the Scarborough folks joked that, hey, you've got the largest dirt parking lot in town there, Eric. So we did what we could within two years to remedy that, pave the parking lot. But inside, we had to balance the space to create the right amount of gathering space, with transition and entryways, and then room for classrooms. This building, as we have it designed, as we've worked with our architect, and we've tried to make the most of the property that we have, follows that model. We want to follow the same success that you've seen of businesses across your town and other developments, whether they be residential or whether they be apartments. But we want to follow that same model for success. And so this facility is built that way. It really does need to be balanced in terms of parking, in terms of large gathering space, classroom space for children, and the space for others in between. And so that's where, when Mr. Greer talked about the impact that the 12-foot variance that we're asking for and practical difficulty, that's where, in some people's minds, 12 feet may not seem significant. But when we begin to draw 12 feet, so existing space, the existing building as you know it is in the back here, and as we build out to the front, 12 feet as it begins to cut through seating areas. So really, there's only three spaces to work with. There's the large gathering space that maybe you could cut into if the variance was denied. There is the fellowship and kind of entry and exit area that you could cut into, although that's a two-story facility. So every foot we take out of there, we actually lose two square feet because we would lose that in both first and second floor. And then you have really your non-negotiable space of bathrooms and hallways and facility and utilities type thing. And that space really can't be compromised or changed at all. So we only have the option- Just with, oh, yeah. Sorry. We only have the option of cutting through the gathering space, which is, you can see, when you begin to cut a 12-foot swath through there, that's about 170 out of 600 feet that would disappear. That's a 30% decrease in usable facility. And obviously, for any organization to have a 30% decrease in effectiveness or efficiency, I'll talk in just a minute the real numbers, that puts us outside of the ballpark. If we were to move that to the rear areas, again, it would be both upstairs and downstairs. And we lose all of that transition space, all of that space for people both entering and exiting the facility to be able to move. So even any of the options of, is there a way that the church or that the design can change? We've maximized our lateral design of it. And if we begin to take changes, that begins to change the numbers in ways that we'll talk about in terms of answering questions on the practical difficulty. So with that, I think those are the bulk of my comments. The rest of them will certainly come out in terms of answering the questions on the practical difficulty variance. But the only final statement that I would make is, obviously, it is our desire to create a facility, to make about a 3.5, $3.2 million investment in Scarborough that would allow this community to really match the standards of other facilities. When I drive by, whether it's Saco Bitterford Savings, or Bank of America, or Marsh Imaging, their setbacks from the road are the setbacks that we're asking for. I think that Tom did make that clear at one point, that we don't want, we're not asking for a setback that will put us closer to the road than typical businesses. We merely would need a setback that would put us closer to the right-of-way. So while the right-of-way is, in a sense, an imaginary line drawn across the front of our property, it would only change our distance from the right-of-way. It would not affect our distance to Gorham Road. In the same way, it works very well with the diagrams that were shown for the Gorham Road Improvement Project. That sidewalk, our easement, has already been granted to the city of Scarborough for the sidewalk. And I think the new Gorham Road Improvement, the sidewalk that, sorry, Gorham Road, the sidewalk that Scarborough's installing will work very well with the front of this facility. When we add landscaping elements and the other design elements, I believe we meet the overall character and nature, not only of the road, but all of Scarborough.
Thank you.
You bet.
May we open the public hearing portion of this meeting? Anybody from the public wish to speak or bring up a deed? No, it was a public hearing, proper meeting. Sorry. Can the board have questions or comments or concerns?
Yeah. Currently, it's, you have a serious parking problem. And it's a real hazard on Sunday mornings. Now, you said that you wanted to eliminate some services and create a larger service. Are you going to have one service or two services?
Well, I expect that the community will still be multi-service. It really is the best way to serve the community, both here in Scarborough and beyond. What will happen, the Gorham Road Improvement Project, no matter what, as they improve the road, their roadside parking goes away. So that issue of roadside parking will no longer be an issue.
Okay, so you have to have enough parking-
You bet. We have to have onsite parking or come up with our own-
Enough to cover 600 seats.
You bet. Or, and if we reach, and so generally, churches don't run absolutely full. We've been very thankful to have some good experiences like that. But when you reach those limits, and we have in the past, we create, we come up with solutions to problems. And so, yes, off-site parking, things like that are possibilities. We've always, there have been times in the past when we used those. Before we actually paved the parking lot, we were using off-site parking. So with the Gorham Road Improvement Project, that roadside parking that you see will go away. And we're already working, and that's the great thing about working with Jay Chase and Angela on this, we already have that agreement. And so what we've put in place is if you allow us this and we're able to approve the practical variance, we have a series of mitigation steps for exactly those questions.
Why don't you put the expansion on the other side of the building?
So the expense of that is extraordinary because that would require renovations to the whole back half of this. The back half of this works very well for what we're going to use it for. Classrooms, student space will have really less than $100,000 worth of renovation. If we try to do that on the back half, one, we can't park out here. We can't create this in the parking lot. We don't get the same parking up front that we get out back. Two, we lose those essential parking spots.
What, it's your parking out front?
Well, one, it's not Scarborough parking standard. So we would need to change the, just in terms of our town, our current town standards, want parking in the back and facilities, entryways, and windows up front. So we're building to that, but we end up with less parking. And the expense, we end up renovating, instead of creating an environment for the community where people can meet, we end up renovating the back at high expense and also creating that same awkward facility that's all behind the building and no longer be appealing from when Tom walked away with that. No longer creating an environment for Scarborough that's attractive, we would maintain that same construction from 1988 and image that's far below current town standards. So I do feel it's a benefit both to the church in terms of economics, the cost of renovations and the construction out back, and also to the city in terms of creating a very similar environment. The upgrades to Wentworth, the way Scarborough School appears, we'd love to be at that same character in this town.
Thank you.
Procedurally, I'm trying to understand why they come to us before the planning boards. I mean, this is a rather large campaign. If we pass them, are they going to the planning board after this? On it? I mean, it seems like a large expansion with a lot of wear and tear and, uh, on the roads. And you're talking about putting in lights and increasing traffic to one time. And we're not making our decision on that at all. But I mean, under the criteria, it's a practical challenge.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of moving pieces to this. And it's easy for the Board of Appeals to insert itself into that process. My recommendation is, that's not your job. Your job is to determine whether or not they have met the practical difficulty criteria for a reduction in their setback to the right-of-way. That's all we really need to concentrate on. The planning board's site plan review process will take care of all of the other minutia and details as far as lighting and parking spaces and all of that stuff. That's not, you can't involve yourself in that because there's no way you'd ever get to a decision on the setback.
But we have decisions where they've already gone to the planning board. So why are they here for the planning board?
They've already gone, you have met with the planning board.
So we've met with planning boards, started the process. But obviously, without the variance, it would radically change the nature of this process. And actually, what I would say today is we would be unable to do this. That loss of seats, that loss of revenue, and again, we'll do the math in a minute, makes this project undoable. And so there's no, nothing to pursue with planning board. We do have a lot of conversations ahead with planning board. We've already worked together. And there are certainly some bumps. But the way that it integrates with the Gorham Road Improvement Plan, there is some potential for it to be a real benefit to both sides.
Other questions? Tom? Number one, congratulations on the success of your church. It's really grown astronomically. I've been in the building, I agree with you, it does have limitations. And if I correct me if I'm wrong, it maxes out, any church will max out at about 70% to 80% of seats.
Yes, you are correct. So there would never be 600 adults in that building at one time.
It's a weird phenomenon that churches, it's like, you know, stop no matter how many seats, they'll meet the seats, whatever the reason is. I don't know why. I know that because I just know that. It's a weird, just, the fair state.
That's absolutely correct. It's not a movie theater. The culture and the relationships of people inside, there needs to be space for those relationships to happen. And so it's a community, not a venue.
If you could help me, well, why don't I ask if you have any comments first?
No, my comments, in the staff comments that I distributed to the board and to the appellant's, were simply that I wanted to make sure that the board understood the nuances of the 1966 MDOT plan. We didn't actually have a plan of that in the packet. There's several pieces that sort of get to it, but not quite illustrate exactly how that right-of-way came to that property and then widened out to 100 feet. That's the whole crux of the problem, is that that 100-foot right-of-way is now what's creating this issue. And I want to make sure that the board understood that that's, and I think, Eric, you said it really well in that you're not asking to be closer to the road, but you are asking to be closer to the right-of-way because of that right-of-way line. It's a little bit of a mystery to me how so much planning got done before it was ever discovered that the right-of-way was actually 100 feet wide there.
So it may be the, right, had the Gorham Road Improvement Plan never been run, we wouldn't be in this place. But certainly, the detail that Scarborough has gone into to create that plan has certainly brought to light all of the boundary issues and property markers and that. Our titles, which are in your packets, list several different easements and right-of-ways, including the right for the previous owner to come and harvest hay on the back of the property. But no mention of main DOT owning a significant chunk of real estate up front. And so that's why, very surprising to us.
Can I stop you there? That's actually one of the questions I have. Main DOT doesn't own that strip, they have a right-of-way over or under that strip, is that correct?
It's there. Their right-of-way, they have ownership rights, sir. I don't know if anyone actually owns the road, but yeah, I mean, as far as ownership as we understand it, that's what that right-of-way depicts, is what they have use of, what they have ownership of.
Who pays taxes on that?
Well, I would guess we do, don't we, Mark?
We all do.
What are you trying, is this a learning moment?
I'm actually trying to get a learning moment for myself. Because as we know, we just did a right-of-way across the school, right across the whatever. Yet, we didn't say that that's now two separate properties, we just have a right-of-way. I have a right-of-way on my property, but yet I use my setback is not from my right-of-way, it's my driveway. The people decide, my setback is from the actual property lawn. Yet, there's a right-of-way for a road going right up my driveway. But beside the property. But when we built the building, we could build it all the way to the, not to the right-of-way driveway, but to the right-of-way facing the lot. I'm confused as to what the difference is here than what I thought was SOP.
I've got a teaching moment for you.
Thank you.
We can go back to the previous appeal, where the attorney so kindly read the definition of lot lines. Okay? Where the front lot line meets the road right-of-way is the front lot line. And so if that road right-of-way all of a sudden takes a jog in towards the property and then heads on down the road, that's your front property line. So their front property line, is it the entire width of the property that it is?
Yes, it is. Starts at the eastern edge and extends all the way out and beyond to that.
So the property directly-
East of us, toward Green Needle, is standard property line just a few feet from the edge of road?
That's like 60, is that a 66-foot wide right-of-way at that point? Or is it 80? Maybe it's more like that.
Yeah, that's, that's, the, this boundary right here, when it comes out, this is the boundary line of our neighborhood right here. And then it steps back and comes through here.
That's exactly what I was, I wanted the board to understand, is how that behaves there on that road.
Right. And we picked it up when we met with the town staff, just exactly where that was. The DOT right-of-way shows this being 100 feet wide in here and only 50 feet wide up here. And it's a little confusing, their boundary line on the 50 feet wide was actually further closer out to the pavement edge on the DOT plan than it was, than this right-of-way line. So it's sort of like three lines there. And if you go out and make a search of it, there's actually a pin on this piece here, which would lead you to believe that that's the right-of-way consistent. It's rare that the DOT right-of-way line actually steps back like that.
Did they ever monument the additional 25-foot?
Not that we can tell.
Okay. So that additional 50 feet is divided between both sides of the road. So it means a 25-foot additional increase in depth of right-of-way on your property. And then to the property to the west of yours, does that step back in again and go? Or does that 100-foot continue?
I have the 66 plans with me in small scale, if you want to look at them.
No, I'm just, I'm just interested.
It continues up the way. They obviously widened it where they thought they were going to need right-of-way. And when you get to here, this begins to drop off, especially in 66. And then there's the culvert crossing and their wetlands on both sides. So my suspicion is, they went along and said, back in this area, it's all developed. We really don't need any more right-of-way, we can keep where we are. But from here on, we're going to get it. And if it was reasonably open and easy to obtain, they did. You know, all this was undeveloped, so.
I have another teaching moment.
Sure. Have you gone back to the DOT and asked them to reduce?
We have. We actually went back.
What was the response?
Yeah, we asked to buy it, we asked, what we asked for was to buy this strip back from them and then provide them an easement to do whatever they wanted on it. So essentially, we would own it and then setback would move out and they would give an easement. And the answer was no. Pretty clear no. So we-
Even more emphatic than that.
It was.
What was their reason?
They don't sell right-of-way. It was pretty clear cut.
Once they take it, they don't want to give it that.
It was pretty abrupt. Even if, even if all practical purposes, they had the same rights to it that they have now, we were willing to do that, the answer was no.
So like in all of our other districts, our setbacks are to the right-of-way or to the property line. And that's not the road, not the center line or anything else, it's always the property line. So if they own an extra 25 feet in, then our required setback for that zone starts there.
And could you explain the difference in easement and right-of-way? I think what I'm thinking of is easement as opposed to right-of-way. Because if they drew, if they wanted to go across the back of that property, which-
An easement is given by someone, it's given, if I give you an easement over my property, I'm allowing you either access or I give you an easement for whatever use, you know, you're requesting. I still own the property underneath it. I just can't impede your ability to use that easement space for whatever purpose is given.
So that helps me explain. So right-of-way is different.
There's no setback to an easement.
Okay, thank you. Were there any questions from the teaching board?
If you'd like one, one quick one more. All of the old right-of-ways for DOT up to a certain point, and I'm going to say someplace in the 60 feet, used to be easements. And if you went and looked, the property of others owned to the middle of the road, but DOT took and used it over the top of it and essentially took it. Since then, they actually own the property and take rights to it. And in their mind, if they have an easement over it, they own it. You can't do anything without their permission.
And they don't compensate the people that they...
No. No. But that's, that's, they, they consider that when they took it originally, even though it wasn't easement and they were all the old deeds, they own it.
Okay. Brian, what is the setback? What is the setback?
Yeah, what is the setback that they want to decrease down twelve feet?
In one of my, in one of my documents, I think I had that on my...
You know what it is?
It's a thirty-foot minimum front yard setback.
Correct. We were hoping to reduce that amount to fifteen feet.
Children, a ten-foot?
Fifteen.
Fifteen foot.
So, what's the twelve, what's the twelve feet?
So, there'll be three feet from the edge of the building to the setback, and it, there's a slight buffer there, as opposed to bringing it right to inches, we'll give ourselves feet from where we stopped the construction of our building.
So, you want a fifteen-foot setback?
Correct.
Or reductions, right?
Reduction to fifteen, right. And we want to, don't want to have to come back and ask for a parrot's fur, or encroachment into the, into the setback. So, that gives us a couple of...
Still questions from the board?
It's in the R four zone.
It's not changed. It's not one of those ones, it's always funky ones.
It's still R four. And this is a place of worship, which is a permitted use in all of our residential zones.
And my children worship me, so it'll be true. Okay, here we go. Why don't we go through the, why don't we go through the requirements and go from there, okay? The need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the general conditions in the neighborhood. If you'd like to read in your, I think that would be...
So, there's a significant amount of writing that we placed in here, if you want me to condense, and then we can expand from there, but in the second paragraph, the unique significance of the property was reduced in size based on the MDOT taking in nineteen ninety, nineteen sixty-six. This enlarged main DOT right-of-way for this lot, but not for the adjacent lot to the east, and creates neighboring conditions that do not, let me say that again, this will create this, the variance will create the same setback as other businesses.
And when did the town discover that issue? Was it the same time you guys discovered?
So, they discovered it first because they had the Owen Haskell drawings for the Gorham Road Improvement Project.
Do you know when that was?
A month and a half ago.
Okay, so there's reason?
Yes.
The plans have been in the works for longer than that, but the, the realization of putting the two, two together came about a month and a half.
When we put our expansion plan on top of their existing improvement plan, that's when it came to life.
Okay, thanks. The granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not have an unreasonably detrimental effect on either the use or fair market value of the abiding property.
Again, I would start with the second paragraph. Our current facility does not conform to the most recent Scarborough building and design standards. A three-point-two million dollar expansion will dramatically improve curb appeal and community image. Similarly, the new construction will be consistent with standards of landscape, design, closer to the road location, as current building standards dictate. This design is in close coordination with the Gorham Road Improvement Plan, including sidewalk access and careful mitigation of traffic concerns as coordinated with the city.
And the practical difficulty is not a result of an action taken by the applicant or prior owner.
Again, the existing building, in its location, which was intended to have an expansion out front, was built without the knowledge of the constriction that would be caused by the right-of-way.
And the granting of the variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with the surrounding properties.
You bet. We missed question four.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. And no other feasible alternative is available to the applicant, except the exception.
And again, this goes back to the use of the facility and the ability for it to carry the economic resources to continue for this community to grow, and so without the variance, the proposed expansion will lose thirty percent of its building capacity. The economic impact, it is an estimated loss, that would turn out at about a hundred and seventy thousand per year, per service, so even in a two-service format, three hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. When it comes to borrowing money for the, toward the construction and/or capital campaign raising, it's really two times annual income as your borrowing rate, so it would effectively have about a one-point-nine million dollar impact, and there's no way for us to offset that without the variance.
And we'll go to the variance, that resulted in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with surrounding properties.
You bet. I would start in the middle of that paragraph. The Rock Church, expanding the Rock Church toward Gorham Road will include all the design elements and construction standards that fully meet Scarborough Business Community, including architecture, materials, design, and landscaping. Granting the variance will allow the structure to be at normal setback distances for properties along that section of Route one fourteen with respect to the edge of pavement. This meets the goal of the town's site plan ordinance in providing better street frontage.
And the granting of the variance will not have an, I'm sorry, unreasonably adverse effect on the nat, natural environment.
You bet. This second sentence, this variance will allow us to improve the natural environment, will finally add trees, landscaping, improving drainage. Impact on stormwater, will actually add stormwater treatment, which will improve the care of the environment, in addition to working together with Scarborough's Improvement Plan. The skull, the drainage and the culvert will be done in close coordination with the town's Improvement Plan, making better use of environmental engineering and mitigation to improve the current systems.
And you're not in a flood zone or flood hazard area?
Or outside of floods and shoreline zones.
And on the dimensional standards, those provisions of this ordinance, which relate to the lot area, lot coverage, frontage, and setback, including buffer requirement, the practical difficulty of case where strict application of the dimensional standard of this ordinance to a property for which the variances sought, would both preclude a use of the property which is permitted in the zone in which it is located, and also would result in significant economic injury to the applicant.
You bet.
So, I think you kind of tied in. Do you want to elaborate on that?
Not at all. Exactly that. It precludes the ability of the church to use the property that it has, and certainly the economic impact is obvious when we talk about the financial impact it would have.
Thank you. We've opened the public hearing already, I have four more questions, comments, concerns?
I have a lot. Question two, the granting of variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not have an adversely detrimental effect on either the use of fair market values or abiding properties. There is nothing that looks like this down there. This does not conform to what's there. This is mostly residential. This would conform very, very well to Route one. This doesn't conform down there. It's going to definitely change the neighborhood. Three, I'm, I'm sorry, four, no other feasible alternatives. You've mentioned some feasible alternatives that are present, I mean, they're monetary, we can't decide on whether you're losing or gaining monetary dollars based on that. There are feasible alternatives, that I see. Question five, granting variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly in conformance with surrounding properties. Again, I don't believe that's the case. On both sides, there's apartment houses, there's buildings. I live one street down, there's nothing nice in any of that area. And I think on question six, it's going to have an adverse effect on the natural environment because in the wintertime, there's deer that migrate across Route one, I mean, across Gorham Road, and that's the natural environment right there. Now, it's not paved, it's going to be paved, where your area that you're talking about. I see them from my house.
Oh, the back part?
Yeah, I see them from my house. They go right through there.
As we go back with parking lot.
Into the woods, they go between the...
Yes, back with the parking lot.
So, I have a lot of concerns with this.
Other questions?
I mean, I appreciate any raised concern, and I think that was kind of why I was asking about the planning board, because typically the planning board will say, it looks good, and so I just appreciate it.
I don't normally have this many that I think, it doesn't...
Members? I'll take it, I'll take my, my kind of view on it. There, I'm just going to go with the ones you mentioned, the change of, the granting of variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, will not have an unreasonably detrimental effect on either the use of fair market value of the abiding properties. Right now, it's a metal box.
I don't believe it's metal.
It's metal?
So, the facility itself is, it obviously has siding on it, but it was constructed as a metal building?
True.
I, I don't think it's bad-looking, but, I mean, the town has been talking about driving things closer to the road. I kind of consider this part of the high school area rather than part of the, to me, it, we're seeing everything pushed down, and I, I can't think of it as the, I consider this still as the Oak Hill area, which is one of the reasons I asked about the zoning question, whether to change zones. There's, my biggest concern is something that I'm not going to get into, it's not appropriate for my mentor, is the parking issue, which I do think is a problem on, on Route one fifteen. If that alone was solved, I feel, I feel much more comfortable about this project all by itself. I have a problem, this philosophical problem, but it's not a legal problem, with the fact that, that a piece of land that can't really be used is being penalized against you. That doesn't make sense to me, it's not, it doesn't register, because it's, they can dig it up, it's plenty of room, and they're only, they're only going to dig it up or make tar out of it, and look what they did on Route one on the other side, where they took everybody's yards and didn't think twice about it. So, it's, it's hard to see there was a lot of care going into the, the DOT's making decisions as they will take what they want, when they want, as we've already established. So, to me, it's not going to interfere with that because it's outside of that area, and they may in fact widen that, and they'll do whatever they damn well please. So, to me, I, I don't see a huge issue with that. I, I would have considered that as drive-by, as their land, whether or not a piece of paper said otherwise or not. I think it's important to have buildings not deteriorate and that we improve our areas. So, to me, when I see the granting of variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, it's a church, it'll still be a church, but it'll be a church with the design standards that the town has implemented. Even though it's not the design standards, oh, it is actually, it's the design standards, those, a lot of those condos down there, forty years old, thirty-five years old, so they don't fall in, if, if you wanted to do that same condo project today, you couldn't do that, it'd have to be different. So, what they, eventually, that will be changed, and I don't, in anything for that matter, going down that road. I also do agree with the fact that it brings it in conformance with the, the concept of, I don't agree with this necessarily, but bringing the buildings closer to the road, I'm not, I can tell you flat out, I'm not a fan of that concept, but that being said, that is the design standard. And so, to me, it does meet that design standard, and I don't think, whether this church has got on the front of it more space or not, I don't see how it really changes anything, and if in fact the design standards are what the town expects, the design, the, the town didn't say, on this section, we don't want you to use the design standards, we want you to use this design standard, they said, use the design standards. So, they didn't really seem to care much about the neighborhood, back and forth, they said, the neigh, this is what our design standards are, and I think they are in keeping with that design standard. I also think that it's really appropriate of the planning board. I'll never forget the Mercedes dealership in the butt of the Blue Ridge that came up during the planning board meeting. It's, it's, that's really the job of the planning board. Ours is to be, to allow them to go to the next step, and if the planning board does not believe that this is able to support, the facility can, can handle it, then they'll make that call. But I, I don't think we should be the, I, I don't see that being, I don't reach that level. As far as the variance is unique, I'm going to go right through them, the need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not the general conditions of the neighborhood. I think that's the fact, that it, it, the property was put on there, I don't remember when it was built, but it was put up quickly and, and initially rather shoddily, but they did do a nice job trying to fill it in, and, you know, different churches that have been there have improved it as it's gone along. This is a major change, but if you also look at the design standards of Great American Neighborhoods, there's always a core building that surrounds that, and it's in the past been a church, it has since morphed to other items, but in reality, the, the whole concept of the Great American Neighborhood or the Village Center Neighborhood is surrounded by a unique and solid building, and we can go back to, you can look anywhere, you can look at the Great American Neighborhood there, you can look at all of the, 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 the design standards that are currently being used by the state of Maine, and it not necessarily encompasses a church, but encompasses a building that has a presence that sets the tone. So, I think that's consistent. The practical difficulty is not a result of the action taken by the applicant or prior owner, I think that goes without saying. I don't have a problem with that, obviously, if the town didn't know about this thing, I don't know how they could... No other feasible alternative is available to the applicant except the variance. They could go backwards, that certainly would be an option, it would be inconsistent with the goals of, of the, of the design standards, and it would mean that you'd have a very nice-looking back end of the building and a continually less than nice-looking front of the building, so I don't think, I don't see that as a gain. And having been in that building, I don't belong to that church, I've been in that building, so I've got no, there's nothing there for me, that, I've got no reason to say, oh, it's, it needs to be that way because I, I go to that church, I don't. But I do know that facility, and I do know that it's kind of a hodgepodge back there, and I don't think that the original planner has ever anticipated seeing the volume that's grown out of that, and like I said earlier, I commend you for that, it's hard to do by any standard. So, the next one, number five, the granting of the variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with the surrounding properties. I, I think that Mr. Carrot's dead right, when you look at it from the left and to the right, I can't disagree with that logic. I don't view that as a, as the area, though I, I view the Oak Hill area as, where that speed limit's closed down, as kind of a thirty-five mile an hour zone. That is, in my opinion, the transition of the neighborhood coming from one set of standards to a second set of standards, which is bringing you into the Oak Hill area. And if you think about the ball fields and the school and what was, actually looking at at one point being a hockey rink and all of that stuff, I, I see that as the area. Do I think it affects the immediate properties? Of course it does, it's next door to them, but does it affect the, number one, is it negative? I, I don't see it as negative, I see it as an improvement, because we're bringing it more closely to the design standards of the future, and I think there's some serious water problems in that neighborhood, both with the road there that goes, the one that has a lot of challenges, but near there.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
I, I think that's probably going to have to be addressed in the master plan.
Is that the Village Oak Hill?
No, that road...
One fourteen down the, down the...
It floods.
Sawyer Road?
Not Sawyer, but the one that's a...
Next one.
Next one, because it's, it's, it's a dead-end street.
Yeah.
Green Needle.
Green Needle.
That doesn't, that doesn't see the flood, well, see if the flood is the Village Oak Hill. When you get heavy rainfalls, Green Needle doesn't get in anywhere near as bad, and that's going to be right directly behind them. Rainfall, the road at the Village Oak Hill is completely washed up.
Right, but that's the positive of this, is that's going to have to be addressed because by doing this project, the planning board is going to have to deal with that bad issue. the planning board is gonna have to deal with that, that issue. And that issue needs to be dealt with, and I know people on Green Needle that say it's the other way around, and I know people on the condos who say it's the other way around, but it's gonna end up on their lap, I have a feeling. Because they're gonna have to deal with that issue, runoff is gonna be an issue. And having experienced that when I built my building, I had to take care of most of the county with the equipment that I had to put in. So I, I know what they're gonna do to them, I, I can tell you what they're gonna do, they're gonna be a lot of water mitigation, and it's gonna have to be.
Well, to Mr. Schuett's point, it would be better if it had come from the planning board to us with the recommendations, so we could see what they're gonna do, because I can't answer these questions without information on, I mean, that, you just brought up a huge point. It's gonna have a detrimental effect on the environment of the water.
But can I add into that comment real quick? I mean, Mr. Greer indicated that they are upgrading the stormwater management standards and bringing them to be more conforming, is that correct?
That's correct.
Am I interpreting correctly? So I'll, I'll just insert my other point real quick, or I, then I'll cease my interruption.
You freely interrupt as much as you want.
I would say my, my finding of fact of, you know, Mr. Greer indicated that they are upgrading the stormwater management standards in that area, also finding of fact that, and again, this pertains, this pertains to my, my other concern, which was mitigated in the discussions, that, you know, the parking issue and the traffic issue that's there with the cars along the road, that the traffic study is to be performed, but after they are granted or not granted approval of this appeal. Because in there, then they have the actual footprint which they can construct the facility. So the traffic study and, and, you know, the traffic mitigation's going, that'll happen after the determination of the appeal.
There is a time too, and there is a process where the town, the planning department comes back with a recommendation to us. That doesn't happen to be this, this, or this criteria. But normally, you're right, there is a situation where they'll come back and they'll give us a recommendation, and it goes back again, but that's not the case here. But again, if you go underneath the, when you put impervious surface up, I've got five-foot half pipes, a hundred and eighty feet long by seventy feet wide, that, like I said, most of Cumberland County is protected by my building. So I get it, it's, it's gonna be expensive, and they're gonna have to deal with it, because the E P's not gonna let you off the hook, and there is a problem there. So I see it as actually being a positive for that neighborhood, because it, it's not going to be, they're not gonna tolerate that with the impervious surface. But you probably have already had that conversation.
Right, right, that's what we're creating with stormwater drainage and runoff, that's what we're gonna have all of those numbers.
Which I believe will solve two neighborhoods' problems, may not eliminate them, but certainly solve, it'll make them less likely to be a problem by default. And that's it, E P's not gonna let it get worse. So that, that's why I'm okay with that, and just sheer experience, I know what happens. The, where was it? Alternative, number six, the grant of variance will not, unreasonably adverse effect to the natural environment. Every time we cut a tree down, we affect the natural environment, just as the way of the world. The magic word is unreasonable. If, they could do the cutting of the trees now, and that would be okay, I believe, whether they did it or not. So I don't see that as a, as a trigger issue. Does it open it up a little bit more to the people in that neighborhood? I don't know how far back the trees go back in, I don't know, I don't know how deep that forest is in that area.
It's pretty.
It's pretty deep, so I don't see it affecting anybody per se, and I think a lot as you go back down, it's pretty wet.
But there may be trees there anyways.
Yeah, there are, and there's also rental pools back there, so, so, I've walked it before, and there's a hole, so there's a bunch of rental pools, there's a bunch of stuff back there, it's all wet, and so again, I don't see that as being an issue. The last one, the strict application of the dimensional standards of the ordinance to the property for which this variance is sought, we both preclude it. And this is probably what I really would lay my hat on, for, that's the right expression, but it's the one I'm using today. The, it would preclude the use of the property which is permitted in the zone in which is located, and also would result in significant economic injury to the applicant. The reality is that, as with any, and I'm not, I don't mean this in a derogatory term, but any business, you've got to be able to serve the needs of your clients, and the clients demand a certain level of space. And if the space is allowed, then the clients have the right to be able to do that. The alternative is to have another non-taxable piece of property on another piece of scabbard of land with another church, which I really don't think, I'm all for more churches, but I'm synagogues and anybody else wants to build something. But every time that happens, it's non-taxable. This is all, this property's already non-taxable, so there's no harm, no fault. And in fact, it's going to make, it will probably be, it, it needs it. I know what happens on that, I get the concept, I understand the philosophical concept and the reality concept of you've got to meet a certain size to meet your needs, and they do have a need, and they do have the means, and they do have, so it does absolutely, there isn't economic impact. We don't like to talk about that with churches, but the reality is, churches have to meet payroll. So I, I just don't have a problem with any of it, that's why I'm sitting on it.
I take a totally different view of this thing. If they had the same and right-of-way as their next-door neighbors, they wouldn't even be in here. They wouldn't be talking to us, we wouldn't have to be going through all these questions. So consequently, as far as I'm concerned, we accept it as is, just because the M D O T took twenty-five feet or whatever it is, okay. You know, if they didn't do it, they wouldn't be talking to us. So why are we even bothering talking about a building that looks like a metal box? That's the planning board's decision to make. Our decision is, should it be set back this number of feet or that number of feet?
So I'm confused, where do you stand on it?
Well, I agree with what they're requesting, that's what I'm-
So we're on the same page, I just talk more.
No, I just don't wanna go through all those questions. I don't think that they make any difference.
Other members of the board wish to-
As much as I would like to agree with Mr. Blaze on everything I can, I agree this is not a circumstance that you created, the M D O T has put you in this position. But in order to approve this, we still have to go through the questions, and we need to, from a legal standpoint, be able to pass the straight-bait test.
I like Mr. Blaze's-
I know, that's easy, quick and simple. But seeing as I'm the guy that always struggles with practical difficulties because of the questions that have to be answered, I'm struggling on two of the points. The first one, the need for the variance is unique to this property and not the general conditions of the neighborhood. If you look west, that doesn't hold any water at all, because everybody on that side is now, at least for some distance, is dealing with a hundred, I went towards north. They're, they're all at a hundred feet, so that's not unique. Everybody else going that way has a hundred feet for how far? Do we have a feel for that?
It's away.
Okay. A hundred feet setback from the center, or fifty feet to the right, a hundred foot rightward, right? Now, if you go the opposite way, towards Oak Hill, that's when it changes back fifty feet, and everybody else deals with twenty-five. So to say it's unique to this property, I struggle with. Because going west, it's not unique to this property, because it says, the need for the variance is due to the unique circumstance of this property.
Right.
And not the general condition of the neighborhood.
Sorry to interrupt you, but it's unique because it's situated between where it changes, how would they stand exactly, makes it unique?
Oh, and I might argue that saying, the rules apply to this property, and just because they're adjacent to another property, doesn't change the circumstance when I look west. It's in the area that goes west, so it follows the same rules, to me, as the people to the west. It's too bad you're next to the guy that's fifty feet.
Now, you wouldn't argue, you wouldn't argue that because that, like, I view it as part of the Oak Hill, to me, that's the start of Oak Hill.
Yeah.
As opposed to west.
But, and I say it's the end of Oak Hill, because the first property going west.
Which side of it?
Uh, east is Oak Hill, west-
Okay, so you're saying that's the demarcation of Village?
Yeah, because they now have the D O T right-of-way of a hundred feet wide.
But where's the, where's the speed limit change?
No, I don't know why you're talking about our speed limit change, same all the way- No, it's thirty-five, yeah, all the way through, all the way down.
I'm not arguing your distance from the road, that's, I get into question of that as well. Someone comes running out of the front of the building, they're right on 114, I get that, but I can't change that. As the board member acting as the question that I have, so, so go ahead, please.
So for us, what's unique for us is, it is right on the demarcation line truly, and so it puts us right on the edge of the zone leading towards Wentworth and others who do have similar designs. And this is not the design I would do if this was my city, but it's not my town.
Right.
And so we've done our best to mask that. What may be unique to the, to it is that the building is existing. We're not trying to create a property that didn't exist, and what we're trying to do is finish a plan that, and so the building that's existing is what's driving us in a direction, so that would be our-
Or adding for variance on the new piece of building.
Correct.
So I'll go to my question four. Question four is, no other feasible alternative exists to the applicant. You, do nothing is always an option, and I'm not saying that you should go in that direction, because stagnation is not growth.
Correct.
So I'm supporting something new, but in order for me to pass this one that says no other feasible alternatives exist, and I think they do. Let me explain my position. You want to go within fifteen feet of the existing, quote-unquote, property, instead of, you want to back.
We wanna go thirty feet, we, we want, what we're really asking for is standard setbacks. If we didn't have the, if the right-of-way didn't extend, we are asking for a way, standard setbacks.
Right, but I can't change, but I can't change that, you've got the setbacks that you have now. So my, again, I know that you've got a limit, because the backside is coming up against the existing building. You're trying not to ravage that existing building, you want to work within that envelope. My question to the architect is, did you consider going wider? By taking off fifteen feet on the, on the front of the property, it affects you by fifteen or sixteen hundred square feet. Can you go wider on the wings and still get viewing angle to the front of the building, so that you can still have a good service, it's still affecting people the way you want to, but going out roughly ten feet wider and bringing the freight, the face back fifteen?
Sure, I'm the civil engineer, not the architect, but I'll take a shot at that anyway. The architect has made this thing wider and wider and wider because of the setbacks. The original design that came up, before they looked at any setbacks, was actually a, a, a longer and efficient. And because of the setback that we were dealing with, or thought we were dealing with, it became wider and wider. And what drives the width is actually losing the parking spaces on these sides in order to get this traffic circulation. You can't go any wider-
Why can't you go backward traffic? Why can't you add another row or two in the rear of the property?
Back, back here?
Yep.
We can, and there's been some discussion with the planning board as to whether or not that was going to be required as pilots are going through or not. And they're waiting for the traffic study to determine whether we have enough space. We have plenty of parking spaces to meet the requirements, that's not an issue.
By, by going wider, I, I, a quick sketch on what you have. I went wider and used roughly twenty-eight spaces. By going back, two more rows, we gain almost fifty spaces. So you would lose twenty-eight up front, but you gain fifty in the back, and that's low-cost construction. I'd much rather level a parking lot and put pavement in than I would to ravage the building and do something more detrimental. So again, I don't wanna make you go wider, but to me, that's a feasible alternative. Until you consider that, I would have to go no, because there's a way of getting around this, I believe, without impacting that front setback.
How'd you deal with the structure?
It's a new structure.
No, I mean, okay, I should stop.
I'm just talking the front new building. Moving the front setback fifteen feet, losing the size of the twelve, it looked like about twelve, and gaining that same footage, that doesn't necessarily hit you what you need, but the viewing angle now gets wider by about fifteen to twenty degrees. So does that still serve the congregation well?
Can I challenge you on a couple of things?
Yeah. I'm not an architect, dude, don't ask me.
Number one, this is called the Village of Oak Hill.
Yeah.
Hint. My argument that that's part of Oak Hill. Number two, if you look right across the street, even with D O T's building, I think it's C N P or whatever the building is that's there, is the exact same distance from the road as opposed church would be. And the three houses going down are either even with or closer to, in one case, more than halfway in. So if you look on that side, and by the way, it's Thunderwood.
Excuse me.
But if you, but if you look at these houses that are here, you get the D O T building, which sits back the same distance as their proposal, that's right across the street.
Yeah.
You look at the house that's next door to it, that sits right at the corner, dead-on. You look at the next house, that one is, it's where the driveway is next. If you look at the green-roofed house, it's almost three-quarters of it, it, it looks like it's only thirty feet in. And you don't get to, you don't get to a house way down outside of the Village of Oak Hill, until you get down to this last home down here.
So my question is, to that, did they get approval to construct that much closer to the road at the right-of-way, was it a hundred, or the, the road width right-of-way?
I guess there's nobody, nobody knew, but number one, I think you're only gonna have that right-of-way on one side, so I guess it wasn't an issue. And if they did, they didn't know about it, because like the town didn't know about it, so it's hard to blame, they didn't know about it, I think we did.
But, you know, ignorance of the law-
Oh, it's true.
Is not an excuse.
But they're there.
Oh, I know, and I can't-
Those three houses are there.
I can't go back and push those building back, bad buildings back, but if they wanted to do it, do it efficiently, then I'd be saying, you're already out of compliance, how are you gonna get more closely in compliance?
Right, but I guess the argument is bringing it into more performance, which number did you pick?
Uh, one and four were my choice.
One and four, so one, the need for variance is due to the unique circumstance of the property and not the conditions of the neighborhood. Well, in fact, it is the property, because I'm not sure how you do-
What's the condition that's different on this property than the one right next to it going towards north, which I guess doesn't matter anyway?
Well, I can't tell, it looks like some water, it looks like this, and I don't know this, it'd be a good question.
I'm talking in theory, Mr. Chairman, what's the difference?
I think most of its wet lines-
If they came to add a porch to the front?
I think most of its wet lines are the difference on that.
Then they have a unique circumstance that they're dealing with, right?
This one doesn't have one, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
So I would say that the unique circumstance of the property is it doesn't meet its needs. It could go back, I mean, there's a bunch of ways you could do it, what's the most practical way? And I don't wanna defend them, but I'm just looking at it from the point of view of, of, if you look at the neighborhood as a whole, it would be consistent with the neighborhood as a whole, barring just Middle End Lane, which is a property that I don't know why they didn't develop over earlier, and barring the condos, everything else is within exactly where they want to be, so it's, it's there, look at this picture here.
I'm not arguing with question two, which is, character, right, neighborhood, I'm not arguing that at all.
Right.
I agree with that. My issue again was around one and four, which is, what's the unique circumstance of this property?
Yep.
And not the general condition of the neighborhood?
I think the other problem is-
Your honor.
The other problem is with feasibility, I, I, my guess is they probably looked at different plans, we'd have to ask them. Right now, we're just ignoring them. But I, I would believe that this has probably been looked at as the most efficient, reasonable way to accomplish something, and not put people in jeopardy from a driving point of view, traffic point of view, everything else. And again, the planning board's gonna deal with that anyway.
Right.
So they may come back and say, you know, you could, they, they may come back with a totally different design, as far as we know. But to me, that, the property can't meet the need of what facility is there, and that's the unique circumstance. Facility there can't meet that need, property can't do it. Not with, 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 and again, I use the word is perfect in there, it's the, the unique circumstance of the property. It's a church, that's a unique circumstance, and so consequently-
But that's not the property.
A feasible alternative, though, I mean, he's trying to deal with the expansion and the needs of his customers. So he's saying, in regards to feasible alternative, I think he has an argument there. He's trying to accommodate, you know, his customers, and what are the alternatives to do this? Clearly, they've gone back and forth and done a lot of stuff.
But I don't know what that stuff is. But I don't know what that stuff is.
Give it forward. I give, I, I yield the floor back to you.
And, and what were the alternatives that were considered?
So, so let me speak to two. One, real quick, you spoke to parking and increasing parking out back as if it was flat space parking and a, a low cost alternative. I know that in my coordination with Tom and the importance, and I don't understand all of the stormwater drainage and water capture and all that, but that is important room space back there. And if it's not used as room space, it would become a very significant, um, underground drainage system, uh, that I think our chairman was alluding to of how expensive that is. So while that's possible, um, to pave out back, it's actually a more expensive process than just flat surface paving that I understand. So just to speak to that quickly, because I think that was kind of, hey, why don't you just throw in a, I'd love to throw in another twenty parking spots out back, but they're not, uh, anywhere near the same, uh, financial picture as the parking spots on the side or even the existing expansion that we'll do. It's different. Dollars for dollars, for square foot, it's different. So I just don't want you to think that we could just do it and we're either being lazy or cheap or not. Uh, we're, we're evaluating the, the benefits of it. So, and, and at this point, we won't need those. But the possibility does exist that there's a need there. To the other side of it, yes, this structure, and it goes back to what I said in my opening comments, that I honestly believe in many ways, and very sadly, two churches in this community, and I don't know the story with Oak Hill, but I know more of it with Harvest, two churches in this community did not thrive in this place. Two churches in this community did not represent Scarborough well, and I would, in some way, they were unable in a long-term effect to serve the people that were a part of these communities well. Uh, I'm sure the individuals, while they were, they were served well, but they were not able to do that in a long-term way. And part of that was the design elements inside. Uh, we are doing everything we can to be specialists and to be technocrats on making sure that our design elements from the width and the depth, because those matter to how communities create and to how people learn. It's why when we go into a movie theater, there aren't ten rows of movie seats with a seventy-foot wide building. They create depth and width because that's how humans engage. And so we're doing everything we can to create a building. And Tom alluded to it, that we have brought this in further than would be ideal in this moment. And really, how we fixed that is we've created stadium seating. And so, uh, we fixed the needed number of seats and the kind of space you need to create by doing stadium seating, that's allowed us to pull it back a little bit. But there are some changes that will prevent the community from thriving. And, and we can create a building that will not work for people, no matter how good those people are inside. It's a strange fact, but it is a fact. So we are trying to balance those things, um, to create, I think, as you said on number four, no, no feasible alternative. The church, a community has to thrive. Stagnant is not an option. Stagnant is dying. Stagnant is a pond or a swamp, and that will not thrive. And I, I do not want that for our community, and I do not want that for your town. So I, we are, in our ways, trying to say, what is it, um, that will be the best alternative? And it is to create a structure that best serves this community. And I mean, I mean this community in every way. I truly hope for that, uh, in every way. I realize those are apartments that surround us, and then you move to, to houses and neighbors right nearby, uh, but I believe that even there, um, there is a benefit, uh, to the community that happens. And, and the alternatives to not continuing grow are where we get into things like relocation. That's why we put numbers of relocation there. No desire to relocate. Love Scarborough, love Gorham Road, and love being your neighbor. But the, the alternatives are to create space, um, for people. And so that's what we've tried to do as best we can, balancing the competing interests of town ordinances and, and construction design along with, um, community development.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I, I think it might be a good time to start going down through the criteria in these discussions that happened. With each, you tell me that you can form your conclusions, your final conclusions for this discussion, because now we're just going to go back through and redo it all over again.
Until we vote.
Yeah. So I think we need to, we need to start taking up each criteria individually and, and take a vote on that.
Okay. Everybody ready for that? Okay. So the need for variances due to the unique circumstance of the property and not the general conditions in the neighborhood. Mr. Chairman, let me step down over to you.
Um, I think I commented earlier about how I feel they are in a unique circumstance. And I mean, they only found out last month about the M D O T, you said, right of way. So I think they do quite understand.
Yeah, I, I agree. It's, it's based upon the, the fact that they just found out that the M D O T has the, uh, the right of way and, uh, and that just changed the property from what they had originally purchased it for and planned for it and just changed everything.
I, I would agree as well that I think that, I believe that there are unique circumstances in this property that, excuse me, that they're trying to address and trying to make this sort of successful, because now this is the third iteration of this business, or excuse me, not business, but, uh, church that's been here. And, um, trying to make this a success only benefits the town, enhances the neighborhood, enhances the entire community. This is a very difficult one for me to answer, and I still struggle with the words trying to put together for this, but I do believe that they, um, the need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances. I just have a hard time explaining it right now.
To me, uh, Mr. Chairman?
Again, I struggle with this one. I look at this as if you're in an area of development where there's ledge underground and everybody is dealing with ledge. I can, I have a hard time, and I haven't heard an argument from anybody on the board that would dissuade me from saying, you know what? Going, going western north doesn't matter.
I mean, I know.
You didn't, you didn't swing.
I didn't say yet. I didn't say.
And going back the other way, if they happen to be in the area where there's a hundred-foot right of way, that's a disadvantage, but it's no different than any other disadvantage. So I'm struggling with why this is unique to this property and not the guy right next door.
And our church is in a business, or a church, sorry, not a business, but their church and next door are residential, right?
Yeah, but you're allowed, you're allowed to do all of those, all of those lifestyles in this residential zone.
So it's not who's surrounding them, it's what the zone is?
Different question.
Oh, okay.
This question is that, again, the need for the variance is due to this unique circumstance of this property, right? And not the general condition of the neighborhood.
And I don't want to challenge, Mr. Go.
I don't want someone to change my mind, is why I'm saying this, because yes, they are a church. That's unique in the way they're going to use this property, but it's, this is really a, a condition or a question around this unique property. This property has, need, get, does, can't get away with it because it's all ledge and nobody else has ledge. Okay, we're going to move the construction of that, that way, and we're going to go into one of these side or front setbacks because this property can't do it. I don't see that. So I'm open to someone dissuading me and just keep going and keep talking about it. I'm only one vote. I don't, I don't decide for everybody.
I, I would feel the same way, and basically, I think other people knew maybe that the setbacks were there or the right of way was there, because you've got a library that's built back that far. You've got a Village of Oak Hill that you keep on referring to as Oak Hill. That's not Oak Hill. You are surrounded. You put this into Oak Hill and you classify that as the Oak Hill development area. It's not. You've got residential units on both sides, and you've got residential across the street. That's not, that's not part of Oak Hill business district. That's a residential area, and it does not fit. And you've got all these, you go right down the row and you look at the buildings, they're all far enough back to meet those setbacks or the right of way. All the way down on that side of the road, the way they were built.
I'll, I'll kind of, I think I could sway both of you.
I don't know.
Um, number one, if you look directly behind the church, you'll see it's a school. Directly behind is a school. That's considered part of Oak Hill. So if it's directly behind, how can it not be part of the Oak Hill area? Furthermore, Oak Hill is not a business section. It's a T V C section. So it doesn't require business. It's, it's a mixed-use section. Most importantly.
But this is zoned out for, or?
It is, but that's strictly for, that's strictly for depth, not necessarily for, um, they, they didn't want, no, they didn't want that kind of density that far down. But get over this. Remember they said that this jotted out on this piece of property only, and they went back in with the, uh, the D O T? Which makes that a specific disadvantage to that specific property.
But going north or west towards Gorham, they're all.
But not at the same depth. No, it goes out. It comes, that piece of property right there, it indent.
Is it a butter different, the one going towards Gorham?
Yeah.
North or west?
As far as the apartment complex next to it?
Is that there? I don't, I'm sorry, I don't.
I remember correctly, part of the, part of the, if I remember, maybe I'm wrong, but part of the comments were that that came down and then it jotted.
It extends there and it continues towards Sawyer Road with that right of way extension. I'm just not, I know it, I know it is contiguous with the next property, the next, um, apartment complex.
Okay.
Going towards, going towards.
There's two apartment complexes.
That's the one I'm not certain of. So that, that honestly is the one that I'm not certain of. You bet. And so we really do believe that that, that unique circumstance, that it is the fact that that line moves on our property line, uh, the fact that when it was constructed, when it was built with a phase one, phase two, how to best serve the Scarborough community, that property should have been able to move in this direction and accomplish this. But there's something unique there. And, and when I go towards Green Needle, uh, those houses have the setbacks that you and I are familiar with. When I go across the street, they have the setbacks that fit are, that are as close or closer than the ones that we're requesting. So, and I think that goes back to my feeling of this. I would not be here. And I, and I mean this personally. If I thought we were asking for something outside the bounds, if we were trying to encroach within ten feet of Route one fourteen.
I have to agree. I'm sorry, technically, this is really a board thing, so I'm sorry to, sorry to cut you down on that, but, um, unless the board has questions, they're, they're welcome to ask your questions, but I want to keep it back to the board.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So again, my, my argument on number one is that that piece, and maybe a couple of others, but that piece loses land as compared to other pieces of property.
And as I go, when I come back and where to get an idea where.
I don't think about it. I think both the apartment houses were built that way. You look at where they're built, they're built way back in the road.
I think, I think you're talking about Wetmanville. Who's said that they, that juts it out? Somebody made a comment.
I mean, to be honest with you, if you were telling me two properties down or three properties down, it comes back, I'm okay with that. You convinced me that it is unique to these few properties, right?
Somebody mentioned in the presentation.
It juts out to the side when the church comes back. And into your argument about properties on the opposite side of the road being closer, if somebody helped me find the goalie, I can't control that. Now I'm judging on someone who wants to build in order to approve this particular application. I, I gotta, it's gotta pass the straight phase test.
I, I have full respect for that.
You too.
I do too.
Mr. Chairman, respect for time. Can we go through and see?
Yeah, I just want to give a clarification. You're the person that said that there was a change in that. I remember if they want to get that, if it's wrong, I want to get that on the record. If it's right, I want to get that on the record. But personally, I think that's an easy answer to that.
That answers my question if it does.
Do you want me to show you this or, or just talk about it?
Just, just read it in?
Yeah. What, what happens is, um, roughly five hundred feet, six hundred feet, before you get to our property coming from Oak Hill, the right of way is wider. It bumps out to back to the original line at that point, comes across that point all the way down to our property, and it bumps back out at our property. So the, the two properties east of us are narrower, uh, the, the right of way is narrower.
And that's going towards Oak Hill?
Oak Hill.
Okay.
That's correct. And then as you go down beyond it, it juts, it, it looks like it juts back in, um.
Just guess.
The thousand feet maybe, down below it, and then back in?
I would say that's unique to these properties.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven hundred feet.
You didn't give me that.
Yeah, it's above seventy.
I'll never get any.
Based on the station, it's about seven hundred.
Okay, so that's, that's a, one. Yeah, why don't we, uh, why don't we vote on number one? So, uh, finding facts, uh, anybody want to put in, put anything in or else I can, it's up to you.
I think we've.
It's up to you. Okay, we've, we've. To me, the ultimate issue is that when it all comes down to a, the, the fact that unlike, not all of the properties have this negative, but it is one of the properties that has that negative of loss, and the other two beside it have that benefit. And so that, to me, is the reason. So, uh, all, uh, do I have a motion on number one?
Motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sure.
Quick question. I know we're talking about properties going towards Oak Hill. Those properties have already been developed with sidewalk. Is that being taken into account for the setback? Because those already have sidewalks there.
I think you're talking about, if it goes the other way, about a thousand feet down, right?
So currently, there's no sidewalk on our property or either of the properties adjacent to it. All of those will be, sidewalks will be added with the, with this process, since we've already granted that easement, and that will be on both our property and the adjoining, but they're not there currently.
And Mr. Chairman, can I clarify some of my statements?
Absolutely.
Because of the circumstance of the right of way changing with both going east or south and going west and north of this property, I do believe it needs it.
Does I have a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? You're all in favor of the need for the variances due to the unique circumstance of the property and not to the general conditions in the neighborhood? That's unanimous. Thank you.
No, I think there was one.
Was there, no?
No. Show, show hands again.
Show hands again. Unanimous. Okay. Uh, the granting of variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not have an unreasonably detrimental effect on either the use or fair market value of the abiding, uh, properties. Joe Cal, step down with you.
I, I would probably put this back to one property that I see going up right now on the other end of Gorham Road for the brewery that's happening there. You look at the four people that are next to that building, and this looks like it's going to be pretty close to the same size, if not bigger, probably even bigger. You've got houses, and you've got people living in apartments on both sides, and you've got houses down on the other side. If you look at a big building for the brewery being built right now, it dwarfs over the two houses that are right next to it. I think this is gonna have the same similar effect, I'm, I'm not in agreement with this, it does not. It has been a desirable change.
I think, I have a little bit different opinion looking at the other side of that, um, you've got apartments next to it, which are pretty big buildings. I think they're, so you have to work like a single-family home with. And I believe you heard from both property owners, and you were in support of it, is that true?
Correct, Steve Berg owns the properties on both sides, he's granted us a grading easement on his property to help facilitate full use of it.
So I think to protect...
The owner has been supportive.
Thank you. I think to protect his own assets, uh, he would be against this if he felt his property values would be thrown.
I'll set to you.
Sorry, I'm checking something with scale real quick, can you come back?
There's always one engineer in the group.
I'm in agreement with this. I mean, it's a church now, it's gonna be church later, it's just gonna be a little bit bigger church. And you know what? The cars are gonna be off the road, so...
Big thing to me.
I'm in favor of it.
I mean, I think this is a nice change, I mean, the person I'm getting is that the current condition of what you have is not very nice and specifically appeasing, and so I think it would be nice for the town and for your members to have it.
Sorry.
Okay, take your time.
I, I mean, I, I'm in agreement, I don't think that this will have an undesirable change, um, I mean, it'll be, I mean, the problem will likely be a twenty-five to thirty-foot building going all the way up, but, um, based on driving towards the center of town, um, I don't think it'll have an undesirable change, especially with apartment complexes on each side. That's my thought.
And again, the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, and will not have an unreasonably detrimental effect on either the use of fair market value of the abiding property. I, I would argue that it probably will, based on, based on the studies that, uh, that I've read over and over again from the state, it should have an opposite effect. It should actually, uh, entice people to be in that area, because that's the whole concept of the, the money that's being spent with, uh, the whole, I can't remember the name of the group. But it's all part of CD cog, where they're trying to actually say, bring those communities tighter together. And you do need a core, you need something that is a baseline, so I, I do think it'll actually add as opposed to detract. Although I won't disagree that will be bigger than, um, I, I think that the issue, the brewery's a legitimate point. There is a difference in that brewery area, it's kinda funny. Those houses are opposite from the zone that's in now, that zone's got changed, and they built those afterwards for some reason. So, it fits more in the zone than the houses do, which is weird.
Well, I just can't see a two-hundred and three-foot building fitting there.
So, it's there, but that's, uh, that's my logic behind number two. So, do I have a motion on number two?
I can motion to approve question number two, as stated.
Second.
And discussion on the motion? All there? That's five to one. The practical difficulty is not a result of an action taken by the applicant or prior owner. And Mr. Crockett will start down, I agree with you.
I don't have a problem with him.
No, it's not an action taken, the DOT's taking the right-of-way, and they're actually being honest and letting us know about it. Thank you for that.
I agree, Mr. Loizell.
I agree.
I agree.
Pretty straightforward, in my opinion. Practical difficulty is not a result of an action taken by the applicant or prior owner, unless you wanna blame them for growing the church, because you could argue that. Um, do I have a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. No other feasible alternatives available to the applicant except a variance. And we'll start down at that end of the issue.
Well, I think I already commented on this earlier, kind of about, you know, how I interpret feasible alternatives, and what they're kinda dealing with, and the expansions that they're trying to do, and I think they've gone back and forth on a lot of different options, and kind of come with other setbacks when they can.
Yeah, I kind of agree. I mean, yeah, they, they have other alternatives, but from a cost point of view, if they've mapped this all out, I'm sure that they know from a cost point of view what's, what's, uh, attainable and what's not, so, uh, I'll agree with them.
I would say that, um, agree with the place, there's always an alternative, um, no matter what it is. However, I feel that they've explored all the feasible alternatives, um, for this particular construction, especially, you know, indicating the cutout from the drawings, and the sections that would, they would be missing if they were to shrink the building back behind the right-of-way. And, and also arguing that, you know, making the point that they would lose function and actual feasibility of doing this entire addition.
Mr. Loizell?
Can I ask a couple additional clarification questions?
Yes, feel free.
Before you had stadium seating, what did the envelope look like in the auditorium area?
Well, so it was a larger, it was a larger bump out, um, it pushed right up, and again, it created, um, a space that... So, it, it was gonna be a cheaper space, because stadium seating, seating costs more than doing flat seating. But we need to pull that back for setbacks are pretty much in to create the right width of depth.
Is that before you found out about the hundred-foot?
Yes.
And then, so you find out, found out about that, in an attempt to make it better, you tried to pull it back?
No, this was our limit before that, we can't, that's, that's what we're saying, we can't pull it back any further than that.
Okay. And the architect considered widths, and it didn't work for them, do you know that?
Correct, and I even have that email from him, and actually, just one thing to the, the option, I, I, we had tried to just do an expansion space like this up front. They wouldn't even impinge on this, and we could not make the physical space for both people and events to work.
Would you be kind enough to forward that letter, so that we can put that on record?
Where the architect says, this width changes the angles? Yes.
We wouldn't do that, no. He wouldn't, that's...
That plus is...
A train's left the station already.
But now I'm coming in late, you know?
But you're taking the vote tonight, so no more evidence is going to be submitted.
But you can use that...
Unless you wanna take it.
Can this be considered...
Yeah, you can, you can take your... It doesn't look like a liar, so you can...
Can this be considered finding a fact?
Yes, it can.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Mr. Crockett?
When they first started talking about this, there was mention that there wasn't another alternative, and I've heard numerous times, monetary-wise, it was the reasoning why you didn't wanna do it. That's not our job, to look at it monetary-wise. Our job is to look at, if you have another feasible alternative, you do have other feasible alternatives. Mr. Loizell actually looked at a feasible alternative, and kind of the comments that he got on it was, it's gonna cost too much money to do that.
So, money is obviously a factor in any construction project, we're gonna spend, we intend to spend three point two million dollars, so there's a financing aspect of it. But I think what I tried to say clear to Mr. Loizell was, that the change in shape does change the functionality of it, that we very intentionally...
Yeah, I'm, I'm not asking a question, I'm just stating my point, so...
Thought you were...
No.
Okay, any other comments tonight? Mine is, um, it, it kinda goes back to B with practical difficulty, and also the word feasible. Feasible's reasonable, not, uh, and any other than that, I think that's a good definition, is it, it is always a way to, you can, you can do a lot of things, but feasible means practical and reasonable while still meeting the needs of the organization, be it the church or being at Wal-Mart. Uh, and I would argue that that does meet that standard. So, the, uh, the item is, uh, no other feasible alternative is available to the applicant except a variance, do I have a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion on the motion? All in favor? That is five to one, Mr. ... And the, uh, granted variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with surrounding properties. Anything to jump to that, Mr.?
I don't see that. I know, I respectfully disagree with the chair. It's only to disagree with me. Unless you mind... Notion of what classifies Oak Hill, Oak Hill, I would classify the beginning of Oak Hill as basically, the school's on it. I mean, it's residential past that, you have a whole street. Let's make that argument after the meeting. I think we beat, beat that one to death.
I'm gonna paint it on the rose.
You're asking, no, I'm finding a fact, that's what I'm...
No, good, you're doing good. Good, you're doing good.
I mean, that, that's my only...
They should, they, they should have it in my ear. Go ahead.
Well, that's my determination, finding a fact. I don't agree, there is a street that has four residential houses all along it, and there's two complexes, and there's residences right across.
Mr. Loizell?
I think, again, you can argue it both ways, but in this case, I believe that, uh, looking at the current requirements of the, the construction, uh, for this type of a building, it, it meets it.
I would agree.
I'll agree with this.
I agree with, uh, with them, I mean, I, I pointed out before that actually the surrounding properties are, if not the same, or some of them are closer to the, to the road than the one they're proposing right now.
And, uh, the question was, the granting of variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with surrounding properties. I do believe you have to look at the backyard, which is a school. So, it does affect, that is part of that neighborhood, and so it is more conforming, that's my personal. Uh, do I have a motion on that item?
So, move.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all there? Five to one. And the next one is, uh, the granting of the variance will not have an unreasonably adverse effect on the natural environment. Ms. Shook, can we sit down there?
No, I mean, I think we discussed this, and you, you know, you talked about how he's gonna be responsible for the water and all those things, and really, the expansion, my understanding is there's really not much that's gonna be changing on the front there, so I think they want to check that out.
I think the planning board's gonna hold them until on this one. And I think they know pretty much what they have to do as far as they run off from the parking lots, and so on and so forth, so, I think they got a good handle on this.
I agree, I'll reiterate my finding fact earlier of Mr. Greer indicating the upgrading of the water storm management standards in the area.
I think I agree.
I, I'm hoping the planning board will address it, because as you mentioned, the street above, and I don't know if it's still an old folks retirement community, it used to be when it was originally built for Villas Oak Hill. There's heavy rains, there's water, it's just flowing from the property, your property, over to theirs, and I mean, the whole road is washed out for all those residences. So, I'm hoping the planning board will address that.
I agree with you. I think that the best thing that happened for the neighborhood is this, because I do believe that they, if they're, they will address that. Uh, and, and a good example of that is when they put the nursing facility up on Route One, and we were very concerned about that, the Congress was very concerned about that. And I've heard no complaints about the water issues at all from that, maybe there are, but I don't know, and we're the ones that approved it, so, to me, it meets that need. So, again, the granting of variance, unreasonable adverse effect on the natural environment, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? No, all in favor? That's unanimous. And then, it's not in flood zones, we don't worry about that. And the last two dimensional standards, those provisions of, uh, this ordinance which relate to a lot area, lot coverage, frontage, and setback, including the buffer, hey, if he's a buffer, uh, requirements. Practical difficulty of case where the strict application of the dimensional standards of the ordinance to the property for which the variance is sought would both preclude the use of property which is permitted in the zone, and which is located, and also will result in significant economic injury to the applicant. Why don't we step down to the rest of the property?
Um, should we do these two?
I agree.
Agree?
Uh, the case where the stricter application of dimensional standards of the ordinance to the property for which this variance is sought would both preclude a use and the property, of the property which is permitted in the zone, and which is located, also will result in significant economic injury to the applicant. I think, um, uh, the fact that there have been churches that have not been able to make it, uh, says that, and, uh, I do think, you know, that, that's the highest and best use of the facility, or the only use of the facility, and obviously, that highest and best use hasn't worked. So, for whatever reasons, so, I'm okay with it. Do I have a motion on that?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all there? That's unanimous, okay? And so, then the final, uh, do I have a motion on the final, uh...
Move to appeal, twenty-six oh three, as presented?
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? And opposed? And it's one opposed, it carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, there's one last thing I've gotta read before we close out, guys.
From you.
Yeah, we'll do it before zoning board comments, we'll slip this in, I'm gonna slip in, maybe just slip one more thing in, I'm sorry, I should've said earlier. There's one more item that slipped into the agenda, it's six-month extension request for Nine Shipwreck. Uh, thank you for meeting us last week as we continue to process and renovate our cottage at Nine Shipwreck Road, Igges Beach. As you know, the property is family cottage jointly owned by David Askel and his sister Sarah Douglas. Sadly, Sarah's, uh, husband Gregory was diagnosed with advanced pancreatic cancer that's pressed October, and he has been undergoing treatment in Florida since then. Obviously, this is a sad reality, it's taken center stage in Sarah and Barry's life, and we cannot expect them to be available in the coming weeks to focus on our project. Based on this, uh, we are requesting that the town grant us a six-month extension on the variance that was approved in December, allowing us to delay the start of the construction on the project to late fall of this year. In the meantime, we are proceeding with our building and floor plans, and we're ready to submit those to you later in the summer in order to gain our building permit. It won't go to us, it'll go to the, uh, plant firm. Uh, thank you for your understanding and cooperation in the forward to respond to your request, and David Askel. Do I have a motion to accept the extension on this property, which is a standard procedure now that's, uh, has been put in place for us?
Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all there? That's unanimous, I'm sorry to hear that, uh, for the family, I'm glad we're able to help them, at least they're aware of it. Miss Paul Steph, any other comments for tonight?
Uh, no, other than to, um, welcome Mr. Loizell, and we do thank Jim Stark for his service. At some point, we will have a, a take parade or something, in his honor. Whenever he's back in country. But welcome, welcome back, uh, and, and I just would like to reiterate that, um, yeah, I'm hard on you guys all the time. But you, you do a good job, and you do a great service for the community, and I appreciate every one of you that dedicate your time to this sport. It, it can't go without being said enough, that, um, that's a, uh, you're shouldering a big responsibility, in my mind, it's a very significant one, and I appreciate everybody that does this.
Well, your, your advice has been valuable to us, I know that, I don't think any one of us would, would question, you bring a lot of knowledge and a lot of, uh, experience to the table that we don't have, so thank you.
Could you mind putting that in writing for my wife?
It's not part of the life. That tree's gone.
According to her, I have no knowledge at all.
Anybody else have any, any comments for tonight? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. Have a great evening, thank you very much.